Good evening. I'd like to call to order the January 12, 2010, meeting of the Milton School Committee. And before we rise to salute the flag, I would like to take, ask for a moment of silence in remembrance of former Milton Superintendent Owen Kiernan, who passed away last week. The Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents remembered Mr. Kiernan as being masterful at testifying before legislative bodies. He loved children and was an inspirational leader, and always was positive. He was a great superintendent and educator who was so influential in his time for his educational leadership and love for his superintendent colleagues and many friends. Mr. Kiernan also served as superintendent in Wayland, Sudbury, and Sherborn before coming, becoming Commissioner of Education in Massachusetts from 1957 to 1969. Growing up in Randolph, Commissioner Kiernan completed his time as superintendent in Milton, and after his time as commissioner, enjoyed his later years in national organizations until his retirement to Cape Cod where he was a founding member of the Liberty Hall Jazz Band, playing piano in the band, and serving as a very popular master of ceremonies at many events. He also served as member of the Barnstable Town Meeting. And his daughter-in-law, Susan Kiernan, is a former school committee member. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Please join me in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we'll begin by reviewing tonight's agenda and seeing if there are any additions or corrections. I would like to suggest that we move the consolidated facilities report with Tony Chakello to directly after the Tucker Site Council, which will be a part of the superintendent's report. Are there any problems with that? Mrs. Kelly?
That's fine with me.
Okay.
But I also would like to ask for the committee to approve addition of discussion of some personal, well, not personal issues, some issues that occurred on New Year's Day that affect the Milton School Committee and the Milton Public Schools.
So we can put that under number 10 instead of old business, make that new business?
Yeah, wherever the committee would like to put it.
Do we have a motion to accept the agenda with these changes?
Yes.
Second? All in favor?
Could you, could I ask a question?
Yes, certainly. I didn't ask for discussion, I'm sorry.
More expressive about what this, sounds very mysterious. What are we talking about?
Sure. This is regarding one of our members who unfortunately has run into some issues that I believe affect the Milton Public Schools and the Milton School Committee, and I believe we at least need to discuss it from that perspective.
So we will, I'll hold that motion again. All in favor? Four opposed? Abstaining, two. Okay, two abstentions. All right, so we will move on to citizens speak, and we have Kit Reddington from Sustainable Milton, and Andy Strang is joining him as well. Would you like to come to the table and speak to us this evening? Thank you for coming.
Sarah Mills, the president of Sustainable Milton here also.
You can take that right out of the, be a lot better. Better for your back. Just rip it right out.
Okay, so I'm here representing, tonight representing Sustainable Milton. I'm taking the place of Daryl Warner, who's heading up this particular project for Sustainable Milton. He's out of town right now. We hope, we are here to present each of you with an individual stainless steel bottle that you should use for your water at these meetings and everywhere else. They are recyclable at the same level of, that they are now. If they ever, there's a problem with them and you need to recycle the steel, they can be recycled at the same level. Your water bottles as you stand now, even if you recycle them, they cannot be recycled at the same level. They go down a grade into the next product. So we have presented these to individual members of the selectmen, we have each selectman, and to the planning board. So you are our last group, and we sincerely hope that you will use these bottles now instead of bottled water, partly, you know, to help the environment, but also as an example to students and everybody in the town for sustainability. Each bottle is etched with SM and a number, so we know who you are. This is our first round of having these bottles, and you're getting them first and free. They're not free to, for us or anyone else. We can, anyone can buy these bottles from Sustainable Milton for $13 each for members and $15 for non-members. You should be drinking tap water. MWRWA water is what we have in Milton. It's been proven time and time again, and the latest testing shows it's pure, it's excellent, excellent source of water. Cleaner most times than a lot of the testing on tap water that a number of you drink. It has, it tastes good, it has fluoride for healthy teeth, it's regulated, inspected with reports made public, transparent, tested annually, 122 contaminants in certified labs, published results, enforcement if there's a problem. Bottled water has no consistent regulation or testing, and reports are not made public. And if you've been watching 60 Minutes or any of those programs, I'm sure you've heard about some of the junk in some of those bottles of water. So it's good, it has a health benefit, financial benefit of tap water. It's a heck of a lot cheaper. Bottled water is over $10 a gallon. $10 a gallon, you don't pay that for gas yet. So let's not pay it for water we're drinking. A fraction of a cent per gallon of tap water. Public ownership assures equal access to life-sustaining natural resources. This is a natural resource. We need it to be publicly owned, not privately. Private ownership puts stockholders first. We need to keep the public first. So your second benefit is financial. Your third is environmental. The environmental benefit of tap water reduces the number of plastic bottles, I won't talk forever, don't worry, in landfills. The U.S. consumes 35 billion plastic, uses 35 billion plastic water bottles, 60% are in landfills. They pollute the air when they're incinerated. That accounts for 17 million barrels of oil. 17 million barrels of oil it took to make those plastic bottles. And then you use fossil fuel shipping the bottles. When you go to your kitchen tap to fill this little thing, hey, it's cost nothing. Reduce the pressure on aquifers and groundwater, as you know, Poland Springs, et cetera, buying land and taking the aquifer water to sell it back to us, and for large prices, and reducing the aquifer, it's a problem. Raise awareness. Now, I'd like to point out two pieces of legislation. This is Daryl Warner's work, he's good. He does it better than I do. There's HB 3515, a deposit bill for non-carbonated beverage containers. More money, it would put more money into the state coffers for unclaimed deposits. It would lower Milton's collection and tipping fees and reduce litter. Those take up a lot of room if you throw them out. HB 778 is, we support this, a two-year moratorium on new commercial wells and increased pumping in mass until states' water resources can be studied and a comprehensive policy can be implemented. Currently, 79% of the state's water resources are under medium to high stress. 79% are stressed of our resources. Thank heavens for the Quavon Reservoir. Currently, commercial bottlers don't have to reduce pumping during droughts. They're free as a bird. Corporate accountability and international. We support an effort to get Mass, Connecticut, Vermont, and Pennsylvania to reduce purchases of bottled water for government offices, joining with New York, California, and Illinois, who have such programs. And we will partner with other groups in Milton anytime, anyway, to promote these efforts. If you have fundraising efforts or something going on, Sarah was at Celebrate Milton, we will be happy to sell these bottles, we will be happy to split profits and so on and so forth. What do we do with this money? And there's not a lot of it. It helps us to rent films. We had a film at the library on flow, which was all about water. We had an event on trash and recycling and so on and so forth. So that's about it. We have T-shirts anyone can buy, we have little totes that are, that are, you know, good, the machine wash, and again, the bottles for sale. So we're going to present each one of you, Sarah and Andy. You each have your own number. If you lose your bottle, then we can tell you, or you find a bottle, we can tell you who it belongs to. And there may be some extra if the students aren't here tonight. I'm hoping that one of you will take responsibility for seeing that that, that the ones who aren't here tonight get their bottles. Their names are on them, okay? On the little tag so that you know what your number is. That way if you lose it.
Thank you.
And you can see our logo is on it. If you want more information, www.sustainablemilton.org. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll get them to the students.
Charlene? One for Charlene?
Yes.
You're so nice. Anyone else for citizens speak that didn't get a chance to sign up? Okay, great. Well, thank you so much. We'll proudly use these at our meetings, and thanks for thinking of us. We'll move on to approval of minutes. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the November 17 Milton School Committee meeting.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Great, it's unanimous, thank you. Entertain a motion to approve the minutes of December 8, school committee minutes? Any discussion? All in favor? So it was four accepting, five, sorry. Okay, unanimous, thank you. We'll move on to the superintendent's report. Ms. Gormley?
Thank you, Chief Herson Sheridan. It's my pleasure to invite Tucker Principal Marsha Yuretsky to the table with her Site Council Teacher Representative and Member Jenny Yun. Jenny was recently married, so congratulations Jenny. And we're very, very pleased to welcome the Tucker Site Council here tonight. In your packet tonight, you receive the School Improvement Plan, and I know for a fact Ms. Yuretsky has worked long and hard with the Site Council on this PowerPoint for the school committee. And before Ms. Yuretsky begins, I want to tell you, Ms. Yuretsky has gotten off to a flying start, hit the ground running, and has put a tremendous amount of time and talent into her position, and we want to again welcome you to Milton and appreciate your work and efforts on behalf of the Tucker students, teachers, and parents. My pleasure.
Good evening to everybody.
Evening.
A little off topic, but a graduate of Tucker School yesterday had a baby boy, one of our teachers, Sarah Slater, so Jackson Thomas Slater, who will be a Tucker student in about five or six years, was born yesterday.
Great. Congratulations.
Jenny Yun and I are here tonight to share with you the Tucker School Improvement Plan, and this plan has already been presented, of course, to our faculty with their input, the School Site Council with their input, and to our parent group at PTO. The plan reflects two areas, student achievement and community involvement communication, school, parenting, teacher, community involvement and communication. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we were just checking, thank you.
Just to start off with a review, of course, our school improvement plan is based upon current assessment data, MCAS data, and our AYP. In 2009, the Tucker School did meet AYP in English Language Arts across all subgroups, and this is really reflective of the hard work that's been done at Tucker over the last few years under former Principal Drew Eckelson. In 2009, we did not meet AYP in math, in the aggregate or in the subgroups. So we have really targeted that as an area for us to work on this year, and to take what we've learned from what we've done in English Language Arts and apply that to math in terms of instruction. We can go to the next slide. So the number one goal, our first goal, was to increase student achievement in English Language Arts. And one of the first things we're doing to continue the work with Tufts University is that we're mapping our ELA curriculum. And we're mapping it to match the Massachusetts standards and objectives, and also a vertical alignment between grade levels so that we're growing our children forward. So we're building on from kindergarten to first grade to second grade to third grade. The map provides a general blueprint of curriculum between grade levels. But then we're going deeper, and within each of the units, we're developing a unit of study, particular across the year, at each grade level, that is directly linked to the state's standards. This year, our goal is to fully implement Reader's Workshop across all grade levels. Last year was the first year in grades three, four, and five that Reader's Workshop was implemented, and this year we're furthering that work. We've also put in place a data team, and this is something that was begun last year under the work of our Title I program, but this year we really went full throttle, and we're in our current January Assessment Blitz, as we like to call it, where we've implemented a school-wide assessment system. So we've basically built an assessment protocol that targets every area of reading, sets very specific benchmarks across the year. So we have a fall benchmark, a winter benchmark, a spring benchmark, an end-of-the-year benchmark. And it allows us to really monitor student progress. So as soon as a student dips below a benchmark level, we know, and we know why, and we're able to then target instruction to match that student's needs. And as I said, right now, we're involved in our January Assessment Blitz. We've already assessed grades five, grade four, and grade three, and we're gathering that data, and it's exciting time, it's a little nervous time, but it's also an exciting time because all the teachers' hard work is seen with the growth that we're seeing in the January assessment data. That data allows us to provide differentiated instruction. So once we have the data and we know how the students are doing, where's their instructional reading level, where are levels of need in terms of breakdown, we can then really utilize our support staff to its maximum potential by differentiating instruction and really, what I would call surgically targeting students' needs. And we're also really working hard at developing the open response writing using a common rubric across the school. This is an initiative, that's a system-wide initiative. Last year, we began working hard on open response of giving them often, and this year we're working hard, and we're going to be joining with the middle school team to develop a common rubric and set of expectations. So again, we're growing our students forward. So by the time they reach the middle school, they're going to know all about Fred's and Samor's and have that same language so that our students are very strong entering sixth grade. So that's a focus on the ELA. Jenny's going to share the math.
So our second goal is to increase student achievement in math and moving towards meeting AYP. First, what we've been doing is we've been identifying the power standards in everyday math curriculum. So we've been going through the curriculum and we're seeing what standards are the heavy hitter standards, what standards are in the MCAS, come up every year, what are those big standards that our students need to learn, and we're really focusing on those standards. And part of how we're focusing on them is we're providing additional instruction time to master concepts. We found that in the everyday math program, it often goes really fast and it spirals, and the theory is, oh, if you don't get it this time, you'll get it next time, but we found our kids weren't getting it anytime. So we're really teaching to mastery with all of the concepts. So math instruction has been increased for 15 minutes a day, and the nightly homework is twofold. It's to see if they've mastered what's in class, and we're also sending home basic skill practice. So it's, both of those things are getting reinforced and practiced. Also, another way, we are increasing math time and math instruction and mastering is the Morning Math Masters, which meets three times a week for grades three, four, and five before school in the morning for about 45 minutes. The students are divided into groups, it's about eight students and one teacher, so it's very individualized attention. The students are all working on what they need to work on, the teachers that are, the students are in their class are communicating what needs to happen, right, based on all of those assessments. Also, FLESS time for students that are in Needs Improvement for MCAS are getting taken out of FLESS, this is also a system-wide initiative, and getting more math instruction.
Excuse me, could you repeat that, that last part?
The FLESS time?
What's happening in the FLESS time?
Students that are in Needs Improvement and Warning for fourth and fifth grade are getting taken out of, I believe it's one Spanish, getting...
It was parents' option that the students could be taken out of their FLESS Spanish instruction and given additional math or ELA instruction.
So it's an optional?
Yes.
Parents. Sorry.
And if I might, in addition to Mr. Lovely's question, the Morning Math Masters is funded through the Title I funding. And so Tucker is our only Title I-funded school, and the public and the parents will remember that Tucker had a Saturday program, and that's where they targeted their Title I funds. The team decided this year to use the money with this program before school. And when they get to the Saturday program, there'll be more explanation that this has been a donation, but further explanation by the team.
So we found we did it before school this year instead of Saturday because we found it to be more consistent, three days a week, rather than from Saturday to Saturday, kids weren't showing up, it's easier for them to get there before school, a lot of them are in the breakfast program anyways. And it's more consistency, three times a week, they remember more than from one Saturday to the next, there's a lot of lag time. And also, for the Saturday math program, we're calling it Math as a Slam Dunk. We were lucky enough to have Steve Shapiro and Pinnacle Learning Center donate their time, and it's a donation. And what it is, high school students are coming on Saturdays for fourth and fifth graders that have been signed up, so students that want enrichment in math, as well as students that are struggling, have the option of signing up for this program, and it's half basketball and half math. So the students are getting the math from the high school students as well as a great mentor and friend, so we think that's a great program as well. Also, we have been differentiating our instruction to meet the needs of all students. When we've been doing this is moving towards a workshop model to teach math as well, so the 15-minute mini lesson, and then the teacher is available for students to sort of differentiate that lesson and meet with groups as well, provide enrichment during that individualized time. We've also been administering frequent assessment probes to evaluate mastery in class. So after we teach something, we give a probe or an assessment to sort of see and track the learning the students have made. I know in third grade, the big thing is multiplication, so basically every day almost, we've been giving a multiplication probe to identify if they are studying, if they are learning, and sort of seeing where we want to go from there. But it can be done with any subject. We've also, just like we are doing with our reading with the three times a year assessment, we are developing a math one. We started with pretty basic number sense skills, addition, subtraction, multiplication, and as we develop it more, we will go deeper into that, so that we'll be able to track their learning as well and identify students with very specific needs and target the instruction.
So we're going to move on to our second goal, which is communication and engagement. And this is divided up into teacher engagement and parent and community engagement. For teacher engagement, it's called Monday Morning News. It's a little newsletter I send out every, really Sunday, to the teachers, and it just keeps teachers informed of what's coming up next week. Our faculty meetings have been aligned with district and school goals. Our last faculty meeting, we had a guest speaker in, her name is Marsha Castner, a parent introduced us to her. She is a former employee of the Department of Ed and one of the founding writers of the MCAS math test. So she came and spoke with our third, fourth, and fifth grade teachers, talked about the test, some of the traps of the test, and just kind of gave us some insight through her eyes. We worked hard this year to work the schedule to develop grade-level common planning times, and this gives the teachers the time to do the work they need to do in terms of aligning the curriculum with the standards, building the units of study, working on the math. So we did this by bumping specials up to the lunch common planning time to give teachers solid blocks of time to meet every week. We can do that in a small school like Tucker, so I feel fortunate for that. We also offer grade-span internal professional development. We're continuing that work through Tufts University. Tomorrow, kindergarten and first grade teachers will be working with Tufts. And we've developed data team to participate, to analyze, and plan instruction. The data team, we've developed class profile sheets. So on that sheet is every single class, every single student, all the assessments we've administered at a glance. So we can use these sheets to highlight any particular student across their skills in reading and in math and on the MCAS and on any probes we do, and the data team sits, highlights, sorts, organizes, and works with the teacher to help plan their former instruction. Right after we do our assessments, our January Blitz, today we met with fourth-grade teachers and fifth-grade teachers, and we could look at the class at a glance, and it really helps us to group and sort and organize the students.
May I just ask a question? So how often does that data team meet?
The data team has met after each of the assessments, so it's every three months.
And then is it the whole data team that sits with the grade-level team or just the...
Yes. And the data team is made up of myself, our Title I literacy specialist, the classroom teacher, a special ed teacher, and our guidance counselor. For parent and community engagement, we have our Thursday newsletter, it's being renamed the Tucker Times. We changed the format last week to make it a little glitzier, and I borrowed something from the high school called Three Weeks Out. It's something that's been very welcomed, the parents really like it, it just keeps us all in the loop of having that three weeks out, what's coming up. I host monthly principal coffees, both in the morning and in the evening. For parents, we have parents with different work schedules, they seem, they're very well-attended. The topics are, I come with a topic that seems to be a timely topic. For example, at the last meeting, I brought them into the computer lab, I showed them how to access the Department of Ed website, how to access all the MCAS resources that are on there, how to do the search, show them how to look at their students' reports, areas where they were weaker in, and how to search for samples, examples, and it's all, it's free, it's at your fingertips, parents could easily access it. And then the other half of the principal coffee is parent concerns, topics that they bring up. We have PTO family nights. Our monthly family nights are really family-oriented this year. We, our next meeting is an upcoming Tucker art show. Our last meeting in December was our winter dance, and when we host family-centered meetings, we have incredible turnout at Tucker. It's very community-based school. The Tucker Star Newsletter is a newsletter published by the PTO a few times a year. This year, we developed a parent resource center. We had a PTO closet, which was a nice-sized room, and we worked hard at the beginning of the year with the PTO, we cleaned it up, it has a nice couch, it has a rug in it, it even has a lamp in it, and it's a place for parents that can gather, can have meetings, work together, and it's a comfortable spot, doesn't feel like a closet. And we've recently developed a parent focus group. We met the last month for the first time, and this parent focus group is to address our AYP issues within our subgroups. It's made up of parents from those subgroups, and the big question we're asking in this parent focus group is, what can we do at the school level to better support the students? What can we do at the school level to better support the families so they can support their children? So we're asking some of those real hard questions about our subgroups so we can do better by the children. And this is the real Tucker. These are the faces behind all the numbers that we talk about, all the learning that we do. So we'd love to talk to you if you have any questions.
Wonderful presentation. Are there any questions from school committee members, Ms. Bagby Jones?
Are you still doing the learning walks?
Are you still doing the learning walks?
We will be doing the learning walks. We have not had a learning walk this year. Our next parent focus group is January twentieth, and we will be doing a learning walk that day with the parents.
It was just very impressive when I went, so I think we would.
Today, if I might add, today we dedicate every other system-wide leadership meeting to a learning walk in a school. So today at Colley Court, our principals, our leadership team from Central, and Jeff Rubin at the Colley Court, we were divided into five different groups, six different classrooms. We each visited each one of the classrooms. Mr. Schultz established what we were looking for. And then there's discussion among the group and suggestions and credits after the meeting. So we've taken the learning walk from Tucker and implemented it system-wide.
Mrs. Kelly?
Wonderful presentation. It sounds like you jumped right in and you're a part of the fabric of Tucker community, which is terrific. You had talked about the ELA assessments and that they're student-specific, that you get to data points that's student-specific. Do we share that with parents or is that right now just a tool that's really in the classroom? How do we communicate with parents what we find with these assessments?
I, would you share it with parents? I think with conferences, we sort of, first, obviously, it's teacher. You look and you pick it apart and you figure out what the student needs. But we share that as a way of information gathering. This is what we've learned about your student. Here are some things we're doing with them. Here are some things that you could do at home. So it is shared, I think, with parents.
Great. And then I was just wondering, in terms of the assessment, I think sometimes the public thinks that we're, you know, teaching to the test and we're testing too much. How much time does the assessment take of a student's day, week? You know, you say you're doing it like every three months or something. So if we could just quantify what that means for a student?
Fifteen minutes.
Okay, so it's fairly simple.
And it's not MCAS assessment. I think when we think assessment, we often think MCAS assessment, but it's a running record. It's adult writings tests, adult reading, which are sight words. It's things like that. It's not MCAS tests. It's not take this MCAS test and let me see how you do. It's the teacher sitting down and reading with a student. So they don't even know half the time that they're being assessed. They're, "Come read with me." Great. I mean, they love it, I think.
The assessments help us pick apart the reading process and know where students actually break down. So whether it's the code comprehension, the sight words, or spelling. So it gives us an overview of really all the components that make up the whole reader and where the breakdown might be.
Mrs. Kelly?
And then just one other question. In previous Saturday programs, I thought that they covered both math and ELA. I'm wondering, I think in your presentation, ELA is no longer part of it. Is that because we've, you know, Tucker has gotten to where they need to be? Or I guess I'm wondering, is that still something that would like to, you'd like to do? Have some component that is ELA? Or where does that all stand?
If we could, I would do it all, but we had to really, you know, just choose what was going to be critical. And when we moved from the Saturday program to the morning masters program, we looked at the standards to really what were power standards and what we wanted the students to master. Those types of standards aren't learned once a week for a period of time. It does take the consistency for the mastery like number sets. So you have to look at, you know, what do you want to teach and what does it take to master it? In our Saturday program, we're targeting other standards such as geometry and measurement. Those are things that you can master in large blocks of time with more, I would call, experiential learning, with hands-on learning, and it will go over to the next week. So we really were thoughtful about what do we want to accomplish? What does it take to accomplish it? What type of instruction do we need to accomplish that? And we designed the tutorials around that.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Bagby Jones?
A question and a comment. I forgot to say, really nice job with the working up to Pierce, the Common Language. I remember when I first heard Fred, I was like, what is Fred? So it's really nice to hear that that's starting younger and younger. And the parent engagement piece that you described, I think, is one of the best parent engagement pieces that I've heard in a while. It was really outstanding, I think. But the two questions, what did you have to cut out to get more fifteen minutes more math? And then when you talk about differentiated instructions, what are the kinds of things that you're doing in differentiated instruction? Because everybody says they're doing that, but what are you actually doing to make that happen?
We didn't really have to cut out anything specific to find fifteen minutes because we stole two from here and three from here. And we really kind of spread it out. So it didn't feel like we were losing a chunk of time from anything. And just kind of revising the way that the students come in the morning and grab a morning paper and do that extra practice activity. So we're kind of stealing back some of those looser times during the day. Jenny can talk more about the differentiated instruction. I've seen it in action in her classroom, but she's.
I think that doing the workshop model leads it. I don't know if you're all familiar with it, but it's a fifteen-minute block of instruction, a forty-five-minute block where kids are working independently, small group with a teacher. And then like a fifteen-minute all-back share sort of whole group thing again. And so in that forty-five-minute block where kids are working, you can really differentiate it, whether it's pulling the kids over that you know are struggling and sitting with them and revamping the lesson and doing it again in a different way. Or maybe it's five kids that you know really got this already and don't need to do it again, pulling them over, setting them up with another activity and sending them off to do it on themselves, whether it's a challenge, it's a something of that. So by having that forty-five-minute block of time where students are all working independently, it really allows you to split it up in sort of many different ways. I think an old word would be like station-like, but it's not really stations. You've split the kids into groups. It could be one kid, it could be.
Great, okay, thank you.
I think that's where the Tucker teachers were able to take what they learned in ELA instruction and bring it to math instruction because it's a paradigm shift of how you teach by having kids work independently, by developing that type of classroom atmosphere and culture and those routines to allow the teacher to break up and change their instruction to meet the pockets of different.
Great, thank you. Mr. Pavlicek?
Just a question. With class sizes having grown a bit in the last year, how does that impact your ability to divide up the class and have this sort of differentiated instruction where you have enough things going on? I mean, the more, obviously, the more students you have, the room, physically harder it is to do that because they're all lacking a little extra space of their own. Have you seen, I mean, even with this last year, we've had two or three more students in a classroom. Have you seen the difference?
Do you feel it as a teacher?
I feel like there's always more space if you know where to look for it. Hallway works, divide them up in different things. I think there's always more space. Yes, obviously, if you have more kids, it takes a little more work on the teacher's part, but I think it's doable.
And at Tucker, we are fortunate in that we are a Title I school. I mean, it does bring different challenges, but it also brings different opportunities. So we do have two literacy specialists this year, how we utilize our resource room teacher.
Can you use the microphone, please?
Sorry. So how we use our literacy specialist, how do we utilize our resource room teacher, and how we schedule. So this year, for example, I asked the K-1, 2 teachers to make sure that they're scheduling their ELA in the morning and their math in the afternoon and flip it for the grade three, four, five teachers. We can't all teach it at the same time and expect to have the support at the same time. So playing with the schedule, having people work as a team in conjunction, making it a system, has helped us with class size. We've also had your support in having some class aids for large class sizes over twenty-six, and that has helped, you know, as well.
So do all students from grades kindergarten to fifth grade have one hour and fifteen minutes of math a day? Is that?
Kindergarten looks different.
Okay.
It's going to look different.
But grades one then?
Yes.
One to five?
Okay. And it's not math instruction where they're sitting at their seat doing worksheet after worksheet after worksheet. There's movement in the classes, Jenny said, between whole-class instruction, small group instruction, there's hands-on activities, and then there is paper pencil task. And then they come back together and review what worked, what didn't work, what did the teacher see? It's kind of a second mini lesson at the end to wrap up.
And when we, if I might, Ms. Sheridan, when we're talking about Saturday programs and before and after school and more time on task, you can tell at the Tucker that every, working with Ms. Yuretsky, every single minute is valuable. And so when we go into the buildings, transitions, when you think of it, could take five to ten minutes. If you put three transitions together, that's a half hour and that's times five days. And so I appreciate the climate at the Tucker, that every single minute matters.
Well, thank you so much for taking time to come tonight and share this exciting.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you for having us.
So now we're going out of order, and we're asking Tony Chikello to come forward to make a presentation on the Consolidated Facilities Exploratory Committee. Thanks for joining us, Tony.
How are you?
Good, thanks. Thanks for coming.
Well, I guess I'll just launch in then.
Go right ahead.
I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I'm the chair of the Consolidated Facilities Exploratory Committee. Two of your distinguished committee members, Mr. Hugh Ben and Ms. Sheridan, are on our committee. This is a committee that's looking at potentially consolidating the management of the school buildings and the town buildings, so into one consolidated department. One of the things that prompted me to be here was that our committee, the Consolidated Facilities Committee, is, has submitted an article for the annual town warrant. That's an article that we hope will get the support of the school committee. It really is going to be critical that the school committee and the school department be behind that article in order to make this work. We're at a stage now where we can answer some of your questions, but we can't answer them all. And I'm sure you've got a lot of them that we don't have answers to, but we want to get the questions from you either tonight or at a future time so that we can make sure that long before we get to the annual town meeting, you're all comfortable with what we're proposing to do here. So let me just give you a little bit of background. You may have heard much of this before, but I think it's important to really set the stage as to what we're doing and why we're doing it. I think the real reason that this committee took shape is that, from your perspective, you as a school committee have a problem. I'd call it a high-class problem because you've got six hundred and fifty thousand square feet of building and a hundred, that we've, the town has invested a hundred and fifty million dollars in over the last ten years. That's a lot better problem than you had ten years ago. But it's still a problem. It's an issue. It's a great opportunity, and it's great facilities for our kids. But your problem as a committee is that you're responsible for making sure that we steward these buildings, take care of these buildings so that they can effectively serve this generation of students and many generations of students to come. And I say it's a problem because frankly, I don't think we've got sufficient resources, enough resources, that we should be devoting to these school buildings to maintain them. We've got terrific facilities, six brand-new, essentially, school buildings with very complicated HVAC systems that, you know, heat the building evenly. You don't have the old situation at the high school where you had a hot side of the building and a cold side of the building. We've had a few of those issues that we've worked out the kinks over the years. But you now have some terrific facilities. But these buildings are big and they're complicated. And they're going to require time, effort, attention to manage, to clean on a day-to-day basis, to maintain and do the periodic maintenance that's necessary to keep them up, and also capital planning for the future. Because as I say, you have six brand-new school buildings, you do. But I have to tell you, we've told you before, you've got some of the roofs on these buildings that aren't brand-new. We didn't replace every roof here because when we started the project ten years ago, some of them were only ten years old and had another ten or fifteen or twenty years of life on them. Those are now ten years older. So the buildings constantly require attention. They constantly require investment in order to maintain the investment that we've got. So that's your problem. Your problem is not unique to the school committee and the school department. The town's got the same type of problem. We've got buildings all over town, some of them brand-new, like the brand-new library. Some of them pretty darn new, like the senior center that we built almost ten years ago now. Those are terrific facilities. They're serving us well. They will continue to serve us well in the future, but they're going to have to be maintained. And then we've got other buildings, like buildings at the DPW yard, some of our fire stations, that are really in serious need of repair or replacement. And we've got buildings that run the gamut in between. All of these buildings require attention. They require care and feeding. And it's very hard for you as a school committee to say that you're going to devote dollars to buildings as opposed to teachers. And it's very hard for, on the town side, people to say, "We're going to cut your trash pickup or raise the price of your trash stickers so that we can invest in these buildings." All of these are very tough challenges that we face all the time. And we have systemically not devoted, in my opinion and in the opinion of people that have looked at this, sufficient resources to maintain our buildings. We're going to have to do that, number one. And to the extent that we can't, we're going to have to make every dollar that we've got available for these things work. So that was the problem that on the school side and the town side that was been looked at over the last several years that we're trying to address. One potential solution that quite a few towns have looked at and begun to implement is a consolidated management of all town buildings in one facilities department. Different towns tell different things. They have different things in and out of the scope of it. But the idea is to get professionals that are trained in building management, building maintenance, to be able to handle the facilities that you've got. That, those are people that have the expertise to effectively manage buildings, complex buildings and building systems, and people that can help us begin a consolidated planning process so that we can deal with our capital needs and the building basis on a more systematic basis. So that's the problem. I've talked about this problem over the years with many of you committee members, many people in the town, many people that have been involved in this. I spent, I guess it's almost a lifetime, it's ten or twelve years now, on the school building committee, working to get these buildings built. And all through the process, the discussion has been, okay, once we get them built, we're going to have to really take care of them. It's a heck of an opportunity we got with huge amounts of state funding, and we got private donor funding from the Coplins and the Cunningham Foundations. A heck of an opportunity. We have to make it count. So our committee, the Board of Selectmen appointed the Consolidated Facilities Committee, which has a representative of the Board of Selectmen, has two representatives from the school committee, has a number of present and former school building committee members. It has two professional building managers on it. And what we did was try to, number one, take a consolidated inventory of all the town's buildings that we have in facilities. Take an inventory of the resources we have to devote to cleaning these buildings, to doing periodic maintenance, the short-term repairs and things, and for capital. And look at those issues. The short answer is, we sort of cataloged and inventoried the cleaning resources that we have. Different parts of town do it different ways. We looked at maintenance and found that our resources on to do the maintenance, to do painting, to do carpentry, to do electrical and that type of thing are sorely lacking. I know your committee, you've got a facilities committee that's been looking at many of these issues. You've spent time and made some effort to try to get an HVAC person onboard. That's been effective. But you've got a highly-trained person who spends a lot of his time fighting fires and changing filters. Not probably the most efficient use of a skilled person, but we don't really have a choice because that's the only resources we have available for that right now. So there's all of these things that we're looking at. Our maintenance resources are thin, and on a capital planning side, we really don't do systematic capital planning. It's episodic and sort of crisis-driven or public-initiative-driven. It's episodic and sort of crisis-driven or public-initiative-driven. The school parents want to make this, school buildings get done. The library constituency pushes to address the library need. I'm not sure if we're ever going to get a DPW initiative to address the buildings before they fall down at the DPW, but the other way we address them is when they do fall down, or if you have a catastrophic roof leak, which the school departments had that type of thing over the years. So, we'd like to bring some capital planning to the process. So, we looked at what Milton has, the good and the bad, and what we've got to do these things. And then, we looked at what other towns have got in terms of models for doing this. We found a number of towns that have implemented, some as long as 10 years ago, and many sort of joining the curve, that have consolidated in some form or another their building management functions. We've heard some great success stories. I haven't really heard any stories of places that it really hasn't worked, although I've asked people if there are those places, we should know about them. I haven't heard any concrete examples of that yet, but we've heard places that have been able to effectively put in place systems where you get the professionals that can manage the buildings, and there's a pretty good working relationship to allow for a degree of control and responsiveness so that you as a school committee and the superintendent and the administration can be assured that the buildings will be operated and taken care of in a fashion that's, number one, not going to hinder the educational process, but in fact, can enhance it. And so, the idea is to try to figure out, will one of those models work for Milton? And so, we're at the stage now where we think this is something that we should explore and we think it's something we should implement. And we're trying to figure out the concrete way that we as a town are going to actually put it into place. The model that we've looked at and that we think we want to adopt is a facilities department, the head of whom, the head of which is responsive to the town administrator on the one hand, but also to the superintendent on the other. So, it's a difficult position because you're serving two masters. That's a tough thing to do, but other towns have made it work, and they've been able to do it effectively. And the bottom line is, people in the private sector, business people, have a lot of customers they have to serve. So, the facilities department, if it gets up and running, has a number of customers it has to serve. It has to serve the school department, it has to serve the various people on the town side, and it's got to make those work. It's a challenging thing. We are in the process of trying to go through and sort of set up the specifics of, what are the control measures? What's the model that's going to be effective here in Milton to make sure that if there's a problem with the building, one of the school buildings, you know, you can name it, somebody has an accident in a particular place or gets sick and it's got to be dealt with, how do those things get dealt with? Or if there are cleaning concerns, this building didn't get cleaned, how are we going to make sure that those things are dealt with efficiently and effectively? And so, we're trying to work out those mechanics now. The reason that we're, that sort of prompted us to be here after all this time of getting here is that, by default, by state law, the management of school buildings is invested in the school department and the school committee, and it's separate from the management of other town buildings, which is handled by the town. You can change that arrangement by statute, but in order to do so, you have to accept a certain provision of Massachusetts law, general chapter 71, I think it's 37m. And you have to then have a vote of, in the case of a town like Milton, you need a vote of the annual town meeting, and you need a vote of the school committee. And either one of those parties can then later pull out if they think it's not working. But, so, we're in the process, last year at the annual town meeting, the town accepted the statute, the first step of that process, and at this town meeting, we'll be looking to have town meeting do the second, which is to accept and agree to go ahead and approve the consolidation. What we intend to try to do is have an agreement negotiated before that time that will lay out the specifics of how we want this, we think this arrangement should work. We're working closely with not only the members of your committee and the Consolidated Facilities Committee, but obviously, the key players in this are the superintendent, Mrs. Gormley, and Kevin Murn, the town administrator. Those are the people that on a day-to-day basis are going to have to make this work. So, our goal is to have a memorandum of agreement for the school committee and the Board of Selectmen to approve by the time of town meeting. So, I've talked a long time, I apologize for that. If I can ask any questions or answer any questions, I'd be happy to do so.
Can I just ask you, Tony, to explain about the consultant that we hired?
Oh, certainly.
Briefly touch on that, please.
Certainly. Our committee, at the end of our process, put together about a 30-page report of all of the things that I've talked about. I think that's still on the Board of Selectmen's website. As we were moving into the next phase, after we sort of did our initial study, we were trying to get some help as to the next steps as we move forward. So, we were able to retain through your contribution, the contribution of the school committee and the contribution of the Board of Selectmen, each putting in $2,000, a consultant who seems to be one of the key players, key experts in this area. The facility, the public facilities manager in the town of Andover is a gentleman by the name of Joseph Piantadosi. He is in a consolidated, he's the head of the Consolidated Facilities Department in Andover and has been sort of living this and performing this job for, I think, five or more years in that position. Before that time, he was involved as a selectman in the town of Bedford, when that town also was involved in a consolidation process. So, he's sort of seen the process from two ends. We got him to take a look at what we were looking at for the town of Milton, and to also help us sketch out what the recommended next steps were, to look at a potential, a sort of program or a job org chart for the facilities department, to look at the key functions, the key functions and responsibilities of the director position and some of the positions that might be under that, and to help us lay out the process and some of the issues that we were going to have to deal with. He put that report together and finished it within the last several weeks, I think. He's been, before our committee a couple of times, and has been very helpful in, I think, laying out some of the issues and things that we're going to have to deal with. And we'll be having some further discussion. For the moment, we're sort of working on our own to try to see how far we can take this. We may or may not see to potentially look to get some additional services from him.
Thanks. Mr. Pavlicek?
Tony, you mentioned the selectmen and us as players in this, but from Mr. Piantadosi's report, I mean, you don't have to look far to see, you know, look at who mows the lawn in this town. And, you know, some of our people do, and they mow the lawn, the cemetery, and the parks department, and the town office building staff, and some of those groups, for instance, parks department and cemetery and library trustees, don't fall under the purview of either us or the Board of Selectmen. So, to what extent are we getting their input into this as well? Because obviously, the more, the merrier, in a sense.
Well, I think, we talked to essentially every department, I think that we could get, had them come in to talk to our Consolidated Facilities Committee when we were doing our first phase of this, to try to hear from them, get their perspective, see what their thoughts were on a potential consolidation, see what, whether they thought it was a good idea, a bad idea, what their concerns were, and identify those things, in addition to trying to gather from them what the resources that they had were, what functions they were performing, that kind of thing. I think the way that we've dealt with this for the moment is to really focus primarily on the buildings. The buildings are what really sort of generated this whole discussion, and they're our primary focus right now. I think that we would, we would say that you should look at all the properties in town with buildings. We'd like to include all the buildings in town that we can, whether it's everyone or not everyone remains to be seen. We would like to include all of the buildings, and we'd like to include all of the grounds that are directly with them. It seems to make sense to have the grass and the lawns and the driveways that are directly associated with them all be tied into this process. With that said, there are, we don't have any interest in taking over the, you know, the road construction from the DPW or any involving that type of thing at this point, although the DPW and other town departments may have plows or things like that that may have some participation in whatever arrangements are worked out. The other issue is, with respect to these elected boards, I think for the most part, we will try to work with the elected boards that are involved. I think, for example, if you look at the Board of Library Trustees, currently, the library buildings are managed under a, almost town-wide, on the town side of things, cleaning contract. I think something like that, at least in the short term, would probably remain. We'll be talking as we go on with the library trustees and the head of the library on these issues as we move forward, but I think the belief is, at least in the short term, those kinds of arrangements will remain. In terms of exactly what happens with some of the other departments and boards, that's something that we're going to have to work out. There are many, many things that will have to be worked out as we move through this process, and I think we, my goal is to keep our eye on the ball and really focus on the big things, and it may be that this department starts out with certain functions and issues, and let's get a track record in maintaining the buildings and doing the core functions. And then, it's going to probably make a lot of sense to put many of the purchasing and other functions into a department like this. This is, it seems like the natural home for many of those kinds of functions, and other towns have done that pretty successfully, you know? And then, for example, you might begin to look at some of the IT functions to the extent that we have, you know, sort of an IT budget in town, to have some of those issues as well dealt with these departments. But I think the primary focus initially is really the buildings and the core functions.
Mrs. Kelly?
So, to Glenn's point, shouldn't this be an agreement between all the overseeing boards town-wide who have buildings? Like, for instance, is the cemetery involved? Is, are the library trustees, the library trustees should be part of this agreement if the library is intended to be part of this maintenance program, even if it's only the buildings and the ground and cleaning? And therefore, we're providing the vision and the structure to really make this the, you know, the independent budgetary silo, let's say, that it needs to be, to be able to advocate appropriately for budgetary needs, et cetera.
I think my initial reaction to that is, I don't know that there's ever been a formal agreement between the town and the library to maintain the building thus far. And I'm looking to really focus on the primary issues and the primary players. I would be happy to have the support of the library trustees in this process as it moves forward, but I am really focused on trying to keep the process manageable. And that's, we've got enough issues to deal with, with town-side and school interests to focus on and corral right now, that I'm, I think that, at this point, it doesn't necessarily make sense, in my view, to bring in a lot of other boards to be formal signatories to the agreement.
So, would you be asking at some point, as this process moves forward, that the school department or the school committee give up certain portion of their budget to fund this department? Or do you intend to have it still funnel through our budget? Because, and this is to my point in terms of having one silo that says, this is the entire budget for maintenance of buildings in the town of Milton. If you only take it from the Milton Public Schools, you obviously have a considerable amount of money, but is it, is it really where we need to be as a town? And I understand the difficulties, believe me, but I'm just wondering what your vision is for the whole budgetary component of it.
Well, clearly won't come just from the schools. We do anticipate that there will be a facilities department that will have its own budget. There will be allocations back, most likely, to the various departments in terms of, well, strike that. There's going to be, I anticipate that there will be a facilities department with its own budget, and some of those resources will come from the school department, and some of them would come from whatever budget the cleaning contract for town hall is paid from, and the senior center is paid from, and the library is paid from. For accounting purposes, my assumption is there's likely to be some allocation of that back. So, for example, I believe you have a Department of Education requirements as to how much money you spend to maintain the buildings. And so, I think that there would have to be some accounting in that regard that would be credited back to the school department in that respect, but I think it would be an independent budget. That's how we anticipate it.
But so, just going to the whole funding issue, what other budgets would have funds that they would put, whose budgets would be donating to this fund? Would it just be primarily the Milton Public Schools and...
No, I wouldn't say that. I mean, to the extent that the Milton Public Schools have the biggest buildings and the most building resources, a bigger chunk of that would come from that. One of the things, this is a lot of the work that we're going to be doing over the next month, is pulling out from the budgets what's currently being spent on maintenance and what's currently being spent on cleaning and other functions, see what's being spent now and see where the budgetary resources are for the...
Right, and I guess that gets to my point. If you're only looking at certain departments, then we're not, I guess I'm concerned that we need to look at this as a town, that, for the reason that you stated in your opening remarks, it's important for Milton to recognize that Milton needs to start looking at its buildings as an investment and maintain them as such. If we just pick off a couple of buildings, I'm afraid that that whole sentiment won't...
I'm not anticipating we're just going to be picking off a couple of buildings. I think if anything, if there's any left off, they will be very few. That's the current thinking right now. I don't know which buildings might be left off, if any. I would anticipate that all the buildings would be included, or pretty close to all the buildings would be included.
Ms. Bagley-Jones?
I have a couple of questions, but just want to clarify. When you say town, I assumed you meant Parks and Recs, library, senior center, town hall, fire stations, police stations, but is that or is not what we mean by town?
No, I think that's correct. At the same time, the parks department doesn't have a lot of buildings.
Right, but for example, if I can just say what my clever, for the schools, and I know Byrne, I'm sure you'll probably talk about this too, the playing fields are a huge part of our athletic program. Who's going to be responsible for those? Some are, we are, and some we're not, and there's been issues of that over the years. But, so that, for example, I would want clarified because for our athletic teams, it is a big issue, the fields.
Absolutely, and I think that's one of the issues that we really frankly are trying to sort out.
Okay.
That's clearly not been determined, who's going to be maintaining athletic fields and whether the fields, the athletic fields as opposed to lawns and areas like that would be included in this or not included in this.
Because that is Parks and Recs, so that's why...
Right, correct. I mean, different towns use different models, right? The Milton model for the Parks and Rec department is that the Parks and Rec department has responsibility for the fields and facilities that they own or responsible for, and for the programming. In other towns, the park commission really is primarily responsible just for programming, and the fields are managed by another department. Sometimes it's part of the DPW department, sometimes it's part of the facilities department. I think for the moment, we haven't deter, I think that that may be an issue that is left largely as-is in the short term. It may or may not make sense to make that change over time. I think that's an issue that we need to have further discussion about, but it's a, you're right, it's an important issue. Because among the things you do is, you mow the fields, you mow the cemetery, you mow these other, you know, you have a backhoe that the cemetery uses and the DPW has a backhoe, and so, that kind of equipment sharing, we want to figure out what the most effective means of facilitating a sharing and most efficient use of the equipment is. That's one of the big hopes that we can... That's one of the big hopes that we can do as part of this consolidation. I'm not sure if we're gonna get it perfect, especially right away.
Okay.
Mr. Lovely.
Thanks for coming tonight. I was initially a skeptic, I'm still somewhat of a skeptic, but I have to confess that I haven't had the time to look, to see, as you and I discussed, because I had heard rumors of things not working, but I haven't spoken to, nor have I specifically identified any place where it's not working. Conversely, I haven't talked to anybody where it is working, I just haven't had time to do that. Let's start at the beginning. The article, I had trouble with the article, because the article says, as I read it, and I think I just heard you say, that the next stage is that you're gonna ask us at town meeting to vote to consolidate facilities. And, but we can withdraw if we don't like it later on. It's a little unclear how that works, but it would be very interesting. Because I wouldn't, I wouldn't wanna see us in a position where we say, "Let's go", and then we withdraw a year later and kind of screw up for everybody, which is problematic. I'm very hesitant to see where, in knowing how fast this town works, I'm very skeptical in how we can reach a point at town meeting where I, as a town meeting member, because I won't be a school committee member, where I, as a town meeting member, could stand and say, "Okay, let's go". I mean, what am I buying into? It sounds to me like the plan isn't developed. You're gonna work very hard to do it. In all probability, we're gonna get some of those yellow sheets just before the town meeting and say, "Okay, here it is", and I just don't know what I'm voting for. And can you tell us, are you comfortable that we're gonna have a plan that is going to be sufficiently vetted? It already sounds as if there are people, at least I've heard, there are people who are not enthusiastic about it. Some of the own departments within the town are not enthusiastic. I don't, when I say the town, I mean those who run to the town administrator. The word I get is that there's not a lot of happiness in some quarters about even the idea of this. I've heard the park department is not necessarily interested in it. And I think you've just said that you haven't really got a buy-in from the trustees of the library. So, to me, if we're gonna vote at town meeting that we're gonna consolidate facilities in the town of Milton, to me, that means, okay, and I think conceptually, we've talked about it here a lot, I think that's a good idea. I think I'm coming to the conclusion that might be a very good idea. But as in all cases, as you know better than I, building these schools, the devil's in the detail. So, I'm trying to figure out, what am I gonna be asked to vote on in May? And I can't envision being in a position where I'm gonna be comfortable enough in May to say, "Go ahead", unless I have a plan in front of me that I really know has been vetted, has been discussed in detail, once it's been presented, has been discussed in detail by all the participating factions, and know that it's gonna work, before I say, "Yes, let's go ahead". So, my question is, are we being too precipitous in asking the town meeting to approve the consolidation? Or rather, should it be in the context of a recognition that the planning continues, for example? We have labor issues. Who's gonna be right in the middle of the labor issues big time? Us. Because it's here that we have a teachers' union, a union for our custodians, and a couple of other sub-unions for other things. I can't imagine, except from what I've been told, that sorting that whole maze out is a major undertaking. So, if I approve it, it's not gonna start the following September, right? I mean, I don't see how it could. It's gonna take some time, we have to do bargaining with the interest groups. So, I'm just having trouble getting my arms around it. That's not to say that the more I think about it, the more I think it has a lot of merit, and I thank you for the effort you're making. I just, I'm not sure what I'm gonna be asked to vote for, and I'm not sure that I'm gonna be ready to be in a position to say, "Yes, let's do it", because I don't know that the "it" is gonna be in any position to vote on, particularly if the town hasn't completely bought in on this. So, I'm kinda with Mary on this one, in the sense that, and I haven't heard Mary say it's a bad idea, and I don't think she thinks it is. I think we probably would agree it's a good idea. But I'm just afraid of the, you know, what is the "it"? And if you're telling me that, "Well, we're gonna try it on a, you know, a limited front", then that means that other departments are still gonna be competing for town dollars for maintenance of their remaining buildings. I'm troubled by that. Because if the idea is to eliminate the town gown conflict, then in my view, then let's talk as a town, and let's make sure everybody's on board. And if they're not, let's start negotiating with them to get them on board. But I'm not prepared to vote for something where two-thirds of us are gonna be in, one-third's gonna be out, and we're the 650,000 square foot gorilla sitting right in the middle, where I'm not exactly sure how it's all gonna shake out and what the impact is gonna be on my budget. So, you know, I think it's a great idea. I haven't heard anything at this table, there's been no reports at this table, virtually none, about, other than just reporting that you've been meeting, and that the work goes on, and there's a very good summary of what Mr. Piantadossi has done. But I'm just, you know, this is January, you know, kinda mid-January, and I'm, where do you see us and what's the timeline when you think that we're gonna have a plan that we can then present? Will it be done in time for the warrant? Do you anticipate, in other words, will this be in the warrant, or is this gonna be one of those, you know, a handout, you know, the night we walk in a town meeting? Because that would be satisfactory.
My goal, I think those are all, those are all very good and very appropriate questions at this stage. I think we have a huge amount of work to do. I would prefer that we had all the work done and we were presenting you what we thought was an end product, or something for you to vote on today, or something. But number one, we're not asking for you to vote today. But I think your question, when, you know, that you want an opportunity, and your comment that you want an opportunity for meaningful input and discussion is legitimate. If you don't get it, if we don't keep the schedule that we think we can and want to keep, then it won't go forward. But, but let me, let me, let me tell you, I don't know yet what all the details of it are. And I think we've been clear right up front that we don't know exactly how it's gonna look. We, and what the details are. What we anticipate is a facilities department that's headed by a director that reports to the superintendent, that reports to the town administrator. And we anticipate that that department will be performing the maintenance functions, excuse me, the cleaning functions, the maintenance functions, and the capital functions with respect to, if not all, virtually all, town buildings. It gets much hazier when we try to figure out how far out we move from the building. Because, you know, you've got the grass, okay. But then, do you go to the fields? I don't know. And, or, and do you include, you know, you've got parking areas, and you've got drives, which are but the roads.
Which have snow on top of them.
Yeah, exactly, so, I mean, some of the, some of the gains we hope to get for this, or is a consolidation of, you know, the mowing equipment and the, and the plows and the performance of those, we may or may not get to them. We may or not get them all together. But I think, tonight, we're not asking you to vote, clearly. What we hope to do is, it's our anticipation that by town meeting, we would be asking town meeting to vote, most likely, to approve a consolidation that would be implemented by an agreement, a memorandum of agreement or memorandum of understanding, that would be subject to approval of the Board of Selectmen and the school committee. Okay? So, it's my goal to have that agreement by town meeting, before town meeting. We may or may not have all of the details of that agreement. It's my goal to have those details of the agreement. But, at the same time, this would, this is not a process that's gonna be implemented immediately. You brought up the unions and the fact that many issues, at some point or other, are gonna be, need to be negotiated, to the extent that they address working conditions and things like that. That's absolutely the case. But I think the immediate goal is to start by getting in place a department and a department head, and give that person substantial input in exactly how the department is put together, and how and what initiatives are done to change things from the way that they are done now. So, to some, one way to think about it is that you would be, initially, we may be largely transferring functions that are performed by current school department personnel to another department. There may be changes in working conditions over time, but those would not necessarily have to happen immediately. So, to the extent that you're just changing to whom the employees report, that is, is or is not something that is subject to negotiation to the extent that it's a management prerogative type of issue. I think we can, we can quickly get into trouble if I try to talk about specifics of things that I don't know about.
You've just gone on a half a dozen items that are critical items. As I read the motion, is this, this motion is, what motion is, is this the town article?
That's the motion we just passed out, the, yes, this is the motion. And the reason that it says, I'll read it, it says, "I move that the town pursuant to Chapter 71, Section 37m of the Massachusetts General Laws vote to consolidate maintenance of the Milton Public Schools, including maintenance of buildings and grounds with maintenance functions of the town of Milton, and to authorize the town administrator to negotiate on behalf of the town of Milton an agreement for such consolidation with the Milton School Committee. Such agreements to be subject to the approval of the Milton Board of Selectmen on behalf of the town of Milton, and subject to the approval of the Milton School Committee. The school committee is responsible for the schools and the maintenance and all that goes with it. The town, the town meeting has no power over the school buildings." Sorry, you're just getting that, I'm sorry. Correct, am I correct, Tony? That, so the town has no control, the school committee is in charge of the school buildings. So, the reason that it specifically names the town administrator is because he has to negotiate on behalf of the town side, and then we have to approve whether or not we want to.
But that's not hard to understand, that's very clear. But the issue, first of all, the misnomer here is that he's authorized, he's negotiating on behalf of the town of Milton. Well, he's really not, because the article doesn't reach the scope of other independent boards who can basically say, "No, thank you". So, if we're gonna consolidate, my point is, if we're gonna consolidate functions, and we're gonna be asked at town meeting to do this, why shouldn't this say that this is to authorize the town to consolidate maintenance facilities, and that it will be subject to a memorandum of agreement that will be signed by the trustees of the public library, the Board of Park Commissioners, the Milton School Committee, and the town of Milton in respect of those matters over which the town administrator has control and which answers to the Board of Selectmen? That's not what it says. It says that we're gonna have a contract between us and the town of Milton, and by definition, we're not gonna have the library and we're not gonna have the parks, right? I mean, that's, the article doesn't even address them, Tony.
Well, the article, that's, that's a draft motion for discussion purposes. The article itself.
That's what, this is not the article.
No, no.
The article last week says, can I have the, someone have the article with them?
I have it.
The article says
What is this?
That we're approving the consolidation of Milton. That's why we were troubled with, strike that, that's why I was troubled with this article that was handed out last week.
So, the article, I think, Byrne, is helpful to keep in mind that it tracks the statute, and what the statute requires the town to do as a prerequisite to any consolidation. The article itself doesn't affect the consolidation. And as a matter of fact, I think what we would be recommending is that the, that the consolidation itself and the specifics of it be put in an agreement that would be negotiated between the town and the school department. Your comments about the school department and the library trustees and the parks department, the other departments, I think that's something we're gonna have to factor into our discussions over the coming weeks. I think, I think we need to think more about who we need to have as part of this. I'm not sure that we do need to have these other departments, but I think we, you've raised the question. Ms. Kelly's raised the question, I think that we need to deal with that question.
My principal concern with, I have, I fully endorse, enthusiastically endorse the idea of pursuing this venture. And I've come, I think, I think, at the end of the day, it has to be done. So, it's in some manner. As I said, the devil's in the details. I'm just reading the article, this is what we were presented last week for the first time, was the article. The article says, "To see if the town pursuant to this will vote to consolidate maintenance, including maintenance of buildings and grounds with maintenance functions of the town of Milton", doesn't say, "Subject to the improvement of agreement", all it says is, "We're gonna vote to consolidate", I wanna understand what that means. I think what that means is, unless somebody tells me the contrary, that I've just voted, as a town meeting member, to authorize the consolidation of facilities. So, is it gonna be changed, so it's gonna read more like this, this motion is gonna read?
As you know, the warrant article only frames the issue. What the town votes on is, it could be something like that, or something different. But I think the, regardless of what's passed, that is read against the backdrop of the statute. And I have the statute here, it's Chapter 71, Section 37m. It says, "The maintenance", okay, "So notwithstanding the provisions of these various chapters, any city or town which accepts the provision of this section may consolidate administrative functions, including right, maintenance functions of the school committee with those of the city or town, provided, however, that such consolidation may only occur upon a majority vote of both the school committee and, in the case of a town such as Milton, the annual town meeting." So, so the school committee is required to vote on its own.
You were afraid last week that we were being asked, at least I was afraid, given what you were, because we were presented with the article and we were being asked to approve the article, whatever that means. So, we made clear in our vote that we wanna see the article in the, something like it, in the town.
That's, that's the only thing we actually wanted.
We're not agreeing to the concept. My question is, so, what you're telling me is that, in effect, it's going to be, at some point, there'll be a recommendation of the warrant committee as to how the actual vote reads. And I, my next question then is, why can't we make every effort to make this a town decision? It just troubles me that some are in and some are out, which is the very reason I thought that we were trying to consolidate, so we're all in. And I'm, so, if there are outliers, all I see is continuing conflict and disagreement as to, "Wait a minute, I'm not part of the consolidation, so I need X", and all I'm urging you to consider is getting some buy-in from those, and I think there's only other two, maybe three groups, cemetery,
Cemetery, Parks.
Library trustees and parks. If they're not in favor of doing this, I'd like to know why. If they are, I think it's great. And I'm just troubled by the fact that there's not a lot of time between now and May. And we've already adopted, I think, the provisions of Chapter 71, 37m, we did that last year.
Right, that's the first part.
Why do we need this vote now until we get it, till we really hammer out a deal? Why do I need this vote?
Well, this, here's the, here's the, here's one of the issues. We've got buildings that are brand new, but, when did we open Glover, was it 2002?
Yeah, not, not, not brand new.
So, we're on eight years now. And different systems and parts of buildings are on a five-year, 10-year, 15, 20, 25-year plan. So, our newest, our brand-new buildings are going on 10 years old. So, I think that I don't wanna let any more time slip than we have to, number one. Number two, this vote of the annual town meeting that's required has to be at an annual town meeting. So, if we slip and we're not able So, if we slip and we're not able to get together what we need this year, then we wait another year.
Okay, that's an important point, that's a good point.
That, so, that's why we're going to push this onto the warrant. And in some respects, I think the fact that we have a very early deadline for the annual town meeting, in some cases, may be good, because it's really pushing the process and getting, making clear to everyone how much work we have to do. You know, so, so, last week, it was certainly not the view of our committee that your committee should approve this article or do anything other than, we were looking to see if your committee, the school committee, would vote to support its submission to the annual town meeting. And, 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 and that was always subject to all of you having to be satisfied before you would support the substance of it and want to recommend it, as, this year, as opposed to pulling it back or some other course of action, we'd have to answer a lot of questions. And I think you've raised a lot of questions tonight that are very good questions and highlight all the work we've got to do.
Mr. Pavacek.
Just along those lines, but the annual town meeting warrant is going to have to go to press about March 15th. Realistically, in eight weeks, are we going to have something that we can analyze, or is this going to be, more likely, is this going to be on one of those yellow sheets handed out the first night of town meeting?
The answer is, I don't know. We're trying to push the process, and I think, I would hope that we have a lot more detail by March 15th, I don't know if we'll have everything done by March 15th.
Inspector Jones.
Just one more.
Sure.
So, I appreciate you're struggling with these points, and I'm struggling too, but I mean, I think we both want what's best for the town, I certainly, we all live here.
Absolutely, all of us.
But, the, my concern is that if we vote this, I'm not going to be on the school committee next year, I'm going to be a town member, I'm going to be a town meeting member again, just sitting in the back, getting to take my shot at you guys.
Rub it in, Byrne, rub it in.
This is, having been on the inside, you know, I've been the outside, like Utah, but the, but the point is that once I vote at town meeting, it's out of my hands. I'm leaving it to the six of these people, all of whom I have a great deal of respect, whoever the sixth person will be, but it's out of my hands. So, is it out of my hands? I voted, town meeting has met, town meeting has approved, and if it says that it's subject to an agreement, to be subject to the workings of the town administrator and the school committee, I, as a town meeting member, am out of the loop. I have nothing to say, so if it doesn't work out the way the rest of us in the town think it should work out, who have voting rights, I'm a cook cookie. I have to come here and sit as citizenspeak and try to convince these guys to pull out or not in the first place enter into the agreement. So, I'm troubled by that. And, and by June, the best you're going to do, or May, the best you're going to do is you're going to have an article that says something like this motion. And then, my job is, then I'm a town meeting member and I'm saying, "Okay." Then the only people that I can rely on here is the Board of Selectmen, warrant committees, out of it. Board of Selectmen, school committee, and ideally trustees of the library and these other people. But I don't have a voice, and I have a problem with that. Because I think that if you're going to ask the town to do this, then the town should know, in very large part, exactly what you're asking them to do, and give them time to reflect and intelligently ask questions. I don't see how that can happen between now and May. Just, okay, and I'd love to see something that works, but I'm not prepared, as a town meeting member, to stand and approve this, unless I know what's going to happen, because otherwise, my vote doesn't mean anything.
Okay, we have more questions, Ms. Bagley-Jones?
And I know people have said this, but it's not clear, you've done so much work on the new schools, and the committee has done so much work on this, it's really appreciated because we don't want to have to go through not having the school buildings maintained. So, thank you for that forward-thinking and that hard work. To see that, and I also think it's great to try to pull the town together, we haven't always been successful in that, but then we need to really pull the town together. The schools have the most square footage, so I'm assuming they're going to be asked to contribute the most money, I don't know, but I'd like to see a formula for that. Who evaluates this person? Where does this person sit? Is Mary Gormly in charge of this person, or is it shared between her and Kevin Murn? How would that work, since, you know, town and schools haven't always done great work together, and maybe this is the time for a change? So, what's the formula for how much space, what does that look like for money, what does that look like for where the person sits? On this flowchart that you gave us, I counted up types of position, the town currently has two types of positions, the grounds labor and the superintendent, I don't know if that's just one person. The schools have five, senior custodians, day custodians, night shift custodians, and I know there's more than one. So, there's five types of positions the schools have in here on this flowchart, times however many people we have, and then there's three new types of positions. Hmm, who's going to pay for those positions, how does that all get figured out? And I'm not asking you to answer those tonight, but those are the kinds of things I'd like to see, and then on the flowchart, who's the facility, who's paying the facilities director, the administrative assistant, the assistant operations manager, and then we have superintendent of schools who has the most amount of square footage, and the town administrator, and we're not even sure if all the town folks are going to be in on this. So, I'd really like more clarification about how this flowchart will work, who reports to whom in terms of this person, do they report to Mary Gormly, does she evaluate them? Maybe she has two-thirds of this evaluation over them, because it's two-thirds of the budget or two-thirds of the town, but, you know, the square footage. But I'd like some answers later on about how this is going to work. And then my last question is, what towns? I've heard Bedford and I've had, heard Andover. I would love to know what other towns are doing this.
I can give you a couple of those right now from our report. Bedford, Andover, Lexington, Needham, Lenfield, Boxborough, Ipswich, Williamstown, Southborough, Barnstable, Danvers, other towns that are looking at or in the process, Norwood, Belmont, Littleton, Dedham, Woburn, Westford, Chelmsford, and Wilmington.
Is that in this report?
That's very helpful.
That's in the, it's in the report that our committee did.
Right.
Back in January, I think it says January 2008, it's actually January 2009.
I would love to see that again, I'm sure we saw it.
It's on the Board of Selectmen's website.
Okay.
It's been posted, I think for like, I think since last January when we finished it.
Right, that's very helpful.
That's got a lot of information, it won't answer a lot of your specific questions, but it will give you the models.
The towns, that's helpful.
I can email that to the members tomorrow.
Mrs. Kelly?
You had mentioned that the consultant was from Andover.
Yes.
What type of town government does Andover have? Is it typical to Milton in terms of?
I think it's, I think it's similar to Milton, although I think that there, I think that Mr. Piantadossi is also in charge of the DPW, number one, and number two, he's got a heck of a lot more budget and resources than we do. So, you see, his flowchart has additional positions, and those are going to be a challenge if we can do them. So, I, I'm not clear that we're going to have all of the resources that we think are appropriate for this. One, just sort of, one of the things that I think that we should highlight is that the school department does a, does a very good job and has substantial resources devoted to cleaning the buildings. It's much more challenged in the maintenance and the skilled, in the skilled trades type positions, there's no electrician. The school department doesn't have an electrician, they, you do have an HVAC person now, and I think one general maintenance purpose with carpentry-type skills, so you're really shorthanded in your ability to deal with just day-to-day maintenance, let alone staying on top of the kind of periodic maintenance, the preventive maintenance that's necessary to keep all your mechanical equipment and some of the other equipment operating. So, what you end up doing is probably shorting the preventive maintenance stuff and dealing with problems by hiring outside people that you pay more money for. So, I, you know, we will have to, we are going to work hard to pull the money out of the budgets and see what's in the budgets now, and it's always been my view that, that there's not been sufficient dollars devoted on the school side to the maintenance, I understand why. Over the years, if you look historically, there are many fewer positions than there were 20 or 30 years ago on the maintenance side. You don't have the maintenance people that you used to, and, and I think you pay a price for that.
Will there be a budget for next year that will reflect in any way a budget for a facilities department, or do you anticipate that's kind of in the future?
That may be down the road, we're really trying to work through that now.
We raised that at our last meeting.
And, and we don't have the, that's one of the questions we don't have an answer to. One, one further comment, if I can make it to your earlier comments. If we go through in June and this doesn't succeed, and you're a town meeting member, you will also have absolutely no say on how the buildings are maintained, it will be your replacement and the other five people here that will have that determination.
Right, maybe. Or, maybe there'll be enough demand on the part of the town meeting that says, "We won't vote for this until you bring us a memorandum that the schools have prepared to sign, conditional only upon the approval of town meeting." I mean, there's nothing that says that town meeting shouldn't have the final say over whether we consolidate, and that you negotiate, and then, you know, basically holding your feet to the fire and say, "You negotiate an agreement, you, town meeting, you, Town of Milton administrator, Board of Selectmen, you school committee, you trustees of the library, stand up and say, 'This is the agreement, we're ready to sign,' and then you tell us as a town meeting, 'Will you approve, will you now authorize consolidation?' I'd feel a lot more comfortable with that. Then I'd know exactly what you're going to do. This way, as a town meeting, just talking from the town meeting perspective, they have no idea what you're going to do, and they won't have any say whatsoever, whatsoever over how it's done, which basically means their vote.
Just like they have no say right now over how the school committee and the school department deals with the buildings. That's, that's my only point.
For, for, if this may, they won't, because I suspect we won't have an agreement. But next year, if it came before town meeting next year, this coming year could be a year in which this memorandum is negotiated subject only to town meeting approval, meaning, subject only to town meeting approval to consolidate, except we would have something that we knew was in form to be implemented, so that the town meeting was voting, in effect, on a plan, as opposed to a concept. Let's.
Okay, so, I'm, I'm going to suggest that we wrap this up at this time. If any school committee members have any further questions that they think of or comments that you want to forward to me or to Chris, there is a meeting this Thursday night of the consolidated facilities, but we're not in attendance.
Subcommittee.
Subcommittee, I'm sorry, subcommittee of the consolidated facilities. So, we could certainly send those questions and comments on to that subcommittee, and, you know, we can report back in the, the weeks to come. I mean, I heard you say, Byrne, that, you know, we haven't had any reports, we have had reports, we received a report that, you know, was the end result of the work of our committee, the Consolidated Facilities Committee, before, the results of all of our research, all of our conversations, we then.
We had a, I'm sorry, we had a report?
It was a report, it was a 20-page report, and it was presented to the school committee. We don't need to go into the specifics, but I'm just saying that.
I'm aware of that one.
There have been conversations about it along the way, and I'm, we're certainly, this isn't a closed procedure, we are open to any comments and, and discussion. I think that it's really important for everyone to have their say, and I just want to say one other thing, this isn't really meant to save money in, in, in actual dollars, it's a way for us in this town to spend our money more efficiently and effectively, and that's the ultimate goal, to be able to provide better services with the dollars that we're currently spending, and that's our ultimate goal. In addition to the capital, you know, keeping that capital on our radar screen, which just hasn't happened, it just has not happened, that's a fact. So, those two things combined are the, you know, the driving force for me as a member of that committee for the past two and a half years or however, however long it's been. Mrs. Kelly, one final comment?
I have one question, I would request that maybe a timeline is created that says, "This is the end product that we want to retain." I, I don't necessarily believe that all the details need to be in time for a warrant. I do believe that in the past, we have been able, as a town, to discuss items prior to an annual town meeting by having meetings and, you know, information, posting stuff on the web, that kind of stuff, that could possibly get us within this timeline, but I think it starts with identifying all the things that are necessary to get us within that, that range.
And when the Consolidated Facilities Committee had an open hearing to discuss our, our plan that we had put together, I think we had two members from the community to come, to come to that meeting, so, meetings have been held, so. Okay, well, Tony, I want to thank you so much for actually being flexible and coming tonight.
Sure.
And, thank you so much, and if, if we have any more, yep, tomorrow night's School Building Committee and the next night's, you don't have a night off this week.
Thank you very much for the chance to, to talk about this.
Thank you, Tony, thanks for your work.
Thanks, Tony. We're going to return to Ms. Gormly's superintendent report.
Thank you. At the last meeting, a question came up from a member, how many students we had put out of the Milton Public Schools this school year? We've put out 31 students during this school year through the investigations led by John Phalen and working with the Milton Police. I also have spoken with the Finance Subcommittee, and I want to announce that Mike Goodless is Milton Public School retired teacher who works part-time for us, is now our residency person, and he will be doing all the coordinating and coordinating the intake and the investigations. And Mrs. Kelly, who is, has the title of registrar in the Milton Public.
Not, not school committee member, Mrs. Kelly.
Thank you, Mary.
That is true, that is true. Mrs. Denise Kelly, who is, has been housed in the Milton High School office, has the title of registrar, will be moving to another office that's accessible in Milton High School, moving out of that front office, and we're looking to, again, work with the public, streamline any kind of identifications made by citizens, parents, teachers, and continue to work on the issue of residency within Milton Public Schools. But we think that this will be a more efficient use of everyone's time, and just as we were talking with the Tucker Principal, time on task to continue to examine this issue. Briefly, I wanted to address the race to the top. Mr. Huban, representing the school committee, Margaret Gibbons as the union president, John Phalen and I attended last week a statewide session on race to the top, I didn't know if Mr. Huban wanted to speak to the conference, it was really extraordinary, I haven't seen anything like it in my career from across the state. Those representatives from every single district came to hear the commissioner, and, again, this race to the top is a federal 4.35 billion education, billion-dollar education reform program under the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act. Massachusetts, under the leadership of the commissioner, is passionate about applying for $2.5 million, and.
$250 million.
$250, excuse me. And, again, we've worked with our union and the Milton Educators Association, and as members have called in and they understand there are issues around this grant, and the issues are tied into merit pay, and there are issues tied into, over the next four years of the grant, tying teacher evaluation to student performance, to MCAS results. And so, I want to assure the public, we were to, the, it's a Title I formula, we would have received $21,000 a year, and I want to assure the public that we vetted, we examined every aspect, we collaborated with the school committee and the teachers' union, but we weren't successful in signing the memorandum of understanding, and so we won't be submitting the grant. Questions? Again, there's a lot of press around this issue.
Mrs. Kelly?
It's fair to say, isn't it, that we are among the vast majority of school districts who have not signed on?
Yes.
Ms. Gormly, can you speak to the, the school, the, how many districts, the total number as of this afternoon, is it 37?
As of this afternoon, but as school committee members mentioned to me, there are school committees meeting tonight and tomorrow before the deadline, and as of this afternoon, there were 37 school districts in the state, there are 350 different districts. There are 350 different districts, several charter schools and regional school districts. The majority of sign-ons are charter schools. But again, the discussion is valuable. The topics, the four goals of the grant are goals that are synonymous with goals that we're working on, differentiating instruction, diversifying our staff, working at the high school for a school-to-career program. And so, again, if the state, this is a competitive grant with all the states competing for this money. And so the deadline is this week.
Mrs. Kelly?
So this is federal money?
Yes.
That basically Massachusetts, because we don't have enough participants, will not be able to be applied for? Am I understanding the process correctly?
No.
No. Basically, there's federal stimulus money, and only 10 states will be allowed to tap into this fund. And the formula is based on the amount of communities that get involved with this grant as to whether it's awarded to that state or not. So the federal government's really looking for full participation by all the communities. And that's really the basis of where the money goes.
So more community signing in would have improved our chances to be competitive with other states in the country.
And is there any strings attached? I mean, why would Massachusetts not want to be part of that grant?
Well, the, one of the big things is the teacher evaluation and the merit pay issues with the union. In order to submit the grant from our town, it would have to be voted on and approved by the school committee. The superintendent would have to sign it, and then the union would have to sign it. They need those three signatures in order to submit the proposal from our town into the central bank. And right now, we do not have one of those three that we know of.
Right. And I guess my comment is, in these very difficult budgetary times, I think it's a shame that Milton is not able to lend its name to that effort on the part of Massachusetts to achieve that federal funding. I really do think it's a shame. And I would like to hear, maybe from the union at some point, what their issues are, what their, why they wouldn't sign on to memorandum of agreement.
And to that point, and I can report back to you, but the majority of teachers' unions across the state, and when we went to the large session in Worcester, the Commissioner addressed it. It's really around issues of merit pay and tying teacher evaluation to MCAS scores. And again, the other initiatives, they were, they were all initiatives that are in our strategic plan. Ms. Kelly, you're absolutely right. But we can report back further, but I wanted to tell you that we've been involved in the process. And again, we gave it our all right up till today.
The other thing, Mary, excuse me. The other thing, Mary, is that there were not a lot of details that were put out there as to how this would be implemented, what the analysis is, what the process is for implementing any merit pay. The details were very lacking. This was all thrown together starting just before the Christmas holiday. And the gentleman behind, sitting behind us, said it bluntly that this is more like a timeshare presentation that we went to. You know, here's the, "We need your signature. Make sure you sign on the way out." And they just, they really didn't give a lot of details as to how the grant would be implemented.
And this is, the detail would be lacking from the state or from the federal government?
Yes, no, from the state. And, Mrs. Kelly, every dollar is important, but we sat next to large districts and charter schools, and Milton would have received $21,000, $22,000 a year. Again, we're large cities and other communities, because of their Title I allocation, we're receiving more money.
If I could just understand, this is $21,000 that would not just be a one-year, one-year funding? Four years, okay. So let's just add up, so that's almost what... Someone do the math for me. Glenn? $84,000, which, you know, as we like to look at things, is more than one teacher, right? We're talking in this town about issues of revenue, and we need to keep it in that context. I really think it's very unfortunate that we weren't able to participate.
Mr. Pavlicek?
Ms. Gormly's list of the school committees that have signed on are just at their school committees that have signed on. As far as I know, only one or two teachers' unions have signed on anywhere in the state. The MTA, for instance, has drafted their own memorandum of agreement that they want school committees to sign with them before their unions will sign on. And as far as I know, very few have. So that's the reason you see that, I think, the predominance of the private charters, which are non-unionized schools.
And regionalized schools.
And it's just, well, the regionalized schools still have unions as well. So it's really a very limited buy-in. And the state's been going back and forth the last two weeks on whether you need three signatures or whether they'll accept it with two, or it's been this amazing dialogue back and forth. "Well, you know, if you get two signatures on it, we'll hold it. Maybe we can put it forward." There've been all sorts of conflicting result, conflicting statements as to whether you need all three signatures or what. But I think the short answer is that very, very few districts, like, I think you can count them on the fingers of one hand at the moment, have to sign in from all three parties, other than charter schools.
Ms. Begley-Jones?
As much as I would agree with Mary about the money and the teacher position, putting the merit pay aside, the idea that we would tie this to student achievement on the MCAS to teachers, I think that that is a huge burden, and I would say an unfair burden to put on teachers, that individual kid's academic achievement is based solely on the teacher. I would just philosophically have a problem with that. Even as much as I'd like the money, I think that that's an impossible task to do.
And that was very clearly stated, that that was one of the federal mandates.
Thank you.
Moving ahead, I'd like to remind the public, again, the reception has been very positive. Tomorrow night, the Norfolk District Attorney, William Keating's office, will be running in the high school auditorium for all Milton Public School parents and citizens, sponsored by our Wellness Subcommittee, a night on internet safety for parents. Again, this is a very timely topic, and I can guarantee you that, having attended these sessions, no parent will leave. Every parent who attends will find it a valuable use of one of their very, very important meetings and nights. Next, I want to just make a reminder, and I have these for the school committee, and it will be on our web, Thursday and Friday, January 21st and 22nd in the evening, and Saturday, January 23rd in the afternoon, the Pierce Players will be presenting Annie. Again, we can guarantee that nobody will be disappointed. Everybody will leave happy. And so for your relatives and friends, this will be just like going into Boston or New York City. The Pierce Players, Annie, and again, no, it will be an afternoon that you remember, or an evening that you remember. Reminding the school committee members and the public that the MLK event this Monday at the Temple Shalom will begin at 5:00. Again, this flyer is on our web. I'm very proud to tell you that Milton Public School students have submitted artwork, poetry, and writings about Martin Luther King, and the topic was heroes. Pat Desmond in the Milton Times has been very generous, and there'll be an insertion in the Milton Times. And all of the students' work will be posted in the temple the night of the event. So again, it's an evening of a light supper, followed by dialogue and chorus and singing. Again, a memorable evening. I want to mention that our World Language Review Committee, under the leadership of Assistant Superintendent John Phelan and World Language Director Gracie Burke, is working hard with over 20 members, teachers and parents. Every other Thursday, they meet. They're analyzing all of the data, coming up with ideas, brainstorming solutions. And at the end of February, they plan to report to me, and then we will report to the school committee. I'd like to publicly recognize and announce tonight, we had met with the school committee prior, that Dr. Dorey Caution, the principal of the Tucker, announced her retirement to her, what did I say? Tucker, to the Glover. She worked at the Cunningham Qualicott and Glover. Dr. Caution announced her retirement last Friday. Dr. Caution has been teaching in the Milton Public Schools since 1993. She earned her doctorate from the University of Massachusetts. Her undergraduate degree's from McGill. She's given her life and her work to the Milton Public Schools, and I want to recognize her tonight. And she'll be leaving us in June. Also announcing the retirement is our very talented Special Ed Director of Pupil Personnel, Jeffrey Rubin. Jeff Rubin will be retiring and leaving us at the end of June. And just like Dr. Caution, I think you'd agree, they've given their work, and Jeff Rubin has worked hard and really made his mark in Milton and developed a special education program that's second to none. Also, many of you have worked with Paula Jamian, the Department Head for Math, and in the new consolidation, Math, Business and Technology at Milton High, Paula Jamian with us in the Milton Public Schools since 1972, will also be retiring. So those are three huge leadership positions. We posted over the weekend, we had an ad in the Boston Globe. Give, I'll send out reports to you about the networking we're doing. I've contacted the Glover PTO, the Special Ed PAC, to spread, to send the word to their people through newsletters, to have parent representatives. And I'm looking to the school committee, if you have an interest in filling one of these positions and serving to represent the school committee. If you'd contact me, I can give you the dates. We've actually set up the first two dates for all of these positions a month from now. And we'll have large screening committees to do this important work. And lastly, I'd like to announce that we have had an open position, and a very important position, Elementary Math and Technology K-8 position. Mr. Phelan and a very talented group of teachers and administrators have gone through two rounds of screenings. And we appointed a Milton resident who was a Boston educator, has won the Millikan Award for Outstanding Teaching, has been tapped in the city of Boston for her outstanding teaching. And they look to her to be a leader in the area of math. We've appointed Ms. Holly Concanon to be our Elementary Math and K-8 Technology Director. So that has been met with tremendous enthusiasm. She doesn't begin until next week, and she's been spending every single day in the Milton Public Schools orienting herself. Does anyone have any questions, comments? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gormly. I have just a few items for my agenda. I'd like to begin with, can we show the video? With a, as a setting of the video, it's a video that was made for the Milton Foundation for Education as a way to say thank you to the residents and the parents of Milton Public Schools. It was created by a parent, a Milton High School parent, Tom Fahey, who was a videographer, and a parent extraordinaire, I should say. And he actually has consulted for 60 Minutes in 2020. He serves on our MPEG Townwide Committee. And it's just a work of art. When you see it, you'll just, I know you'll love it.
I think John's coming back.
John's doing it. We could have probably...
We could have helped you. Just wanted to see you do both things at the same time.
We could have helped. This was shown at the Celebration for Education, held back in November.
And I think the sentiment was a thank you to Milton residents, citizens, parents.
Do we need a drum roll? People tuning in? We are still here.
We were a bunch of moms that got on the phone to each other and talked, and we'd meet over coffee and decide what direction we were going with this event. And there were probably 20 people on the list, and I made calls to 20 people every day, pretty much every day, to check in, "What have you done? Who have you talked with? Who's coming?"
I tell people that the hardest job I ever did was co-chairing Celebration in 2002 with my husband and Chris and Rich Doherty. Although I also say it was probably the best thing my husband and I ever did together on a volunteer level. Somehow, we survived it. It was a lot of hard work. It really was. It was fulfilling. It was, I think I cried after it was over, because that night, when we realized we raised, I think we raised $50,000, which was unheard of. We had no idea we were going to make that. But it was draining, but it was a celebration.
So the word "celebration" is very significant. It is, really, for the Milton Public Schools, a celebration night. It's our yearly celebration with the Milton Foundation for Education.
I think the Milton Foundation for Education has been incredibly fortunate that the people in our town and the parents in our town have decided to support this organization. Because without that kind of support, the foundation wouldn't exist. It's not a placeholder. It's an action organization. And the action is to have people decide to give money and give time so that it can then go back out to the schools.
I've often said, "There isn't a child who isn't impacted by either a mini-grant or the funds from one of the celebrations." Over the last 14 years, the Milton Foundation has given away over $1.9 million directly back to the teachers and the students in the Milton Public Schools.
I'm Barbara Plasky. I'm the Science Department Head for Milton High School and the Elementary Science Coordinator for the elementary schools. I wrote a grant to the MFE, asking for hip waders. I don't think anyone asked, you know, for that before. So what I was able to do is use those hip waders to go down to the brook and sample the leaves, and on the leaves live all these creepy, slimy critters.
So what you're going to do, you want to pick through here with your forceps and pick out the guys and put them in the right position.
You guys mind if I pull?
I've got a little bug.
A little bug, all right.
Everyone talks about hands-on science, and I'm a huge proponent of that. But you need to put something in the students' hands. You've got 24 students in a class. That's 48 hands. What the Milton Foundation for Education is, go on and get those materials. I go to a bait shop and buy earthworms, a simple thing. You should see the third graders, you know, get so excited about exploring their earthworms. You need to have the funding for this, and especially in today's economy. The Milton Foundation for Education allows me to have stuff to put in the kids' hands. I am so proud of the school, and I am so proud of the students, and I am so proud of the community, that every year, they come together, even in challenging economic times, and donate this for the students. I don't know of any other place that's quite like this. And it really, it makes me happy to come to work every day.
I think the foundation and the celebration are really a testament to how Milton is proud of its school system, proud of its children, proud of its future. It's, really says a lot for where we're going and where we've come from.
I loved it. I mean, I loved working with the admin- I loved it. I mean, I loved working with the administration. I loved working with all levels of parents, with kids in all different grades. And every time I try to back out of this organization a little bit, not be as involved, I can't because I just truly believe at my core that this organization has made a huge difference in the Milton Public Schools.
They have just made such a difference in my practice as a teacher. They have made such a difference in the lives of our students. They have made such a difference in what I'm able to do as an administrator in town. That's, I can't, I can't, there aren't words. I can't thank them enough.
On behalf of all of Milton Public Schools students and staff, past, present, and future, I want to thank you for supporting the Milton Foundation for Education.
Shot that comes down.
Well, there you have it. I just thought it was so wonderful. It was worth taking the time out of a busy agenda, a busy meeting, to really say thank you to the people of the town. But also, thank you to the Milton Foundation for Education for all that they do. And I, our words can't say it nearly as well as that video just did. So thank you to Tom Fahey for making that possible, and the Milton Foundation again for all they do. Next on our agenda, we need to, the school committee received copies of our draft report to the annual town meeting, annual report, a letter in our, in our actual report. Edits were sent in before. Mrs. Kelly, you have an addition you'd like to make?
I do have an addition, but I'm not sure, Ms. Gormly, that this sort of fits the bill in terms of, it seemed like we took every school and grade level, et cetera, not grade level, but, and basically said a little bit about what happened during the year. And I guess that's what I was hoping to get for the pre-K program as well. Just, you know, a couple sentences, just something that would just.
Well, if the committee would vote, we could take the piece. I didn't realize that that's what, was your, how you wanted to use the material. And we'll do a submission on the preschool, if that meets with the committee's approval.
Sure.
Yes, I think it's important to include. I didn't catch that it wasn't there. So I want to thank Mrs. Kelly for catching that. This, for the public at home watching, this is our report from the school committee for the past year that goes into the town's annual report. That's mailed to every home. So I'll accept my motion.
Move it with the revision?
Second.
Any discussion? With the revision. So we're actually moving both the letter and the report.
Right. And with the addition on the pre-K program?
On the pre-K.
Thank you.
However the administration wants to write it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Okay, we can, our school committee calendar has, we received one final draft. Again, these are minor edits. Now, I think Ms. Gormly says I've created a monster. No. What we're trying to do is just to keep our ongoing list of what we need to accomplish on an annual basis and the timeline in which that happens. So we have a, second? All in favor? Or discussion? I'm sorry, do we have any discussion about this calendar?
Yes.
Is there any way to try to have our committee reports alternate so that we don't have, you know, the, a lot of our internal committees, subcommittees, report the same night? Like to say, okay, Health and Wellness, you report these nights. I mean, I know things come up.
I think that that's hard to put on these agendas because of when the actual committees meet.
Oh, that's true.
So that's the only reason it's not on there. But I know that Bev sends out a notice to all of us saying, you know, would you like it to be on this agenda? So maybe what we can do is internally ask Bev to do a better job at alternating that.
I think that would be really helpful. So we're not here till midnight. That would be great. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
Any changes?
Okay. And we will move on to the Finance Subcommittee. Mrs. Kelly?
Thank you. The first topic is full-day kindergarten. And in your packets, you received a memo, I believe, regarding the evaluation that the administration did on the kindergarten program and its cost. And first, I'd like to thank, excuse me, School Business Administrator Gillis for going through this and the level of detail they provided. I think it's a terrific report. And basically, what he is recommending to, what he recommended to the Finance Subcommittee and what I believe we voted for to recommend to the full committee is that we entertain increasing the tuition by $200,000, uh, $200,000. I'm hilarious. I can just see the droves. Everyone's leaving full-day kindergarten.
My million-dollar disease.
The reason for that, and I think it was put well in his summary about this, is that the operating costs are going up. And then the threshold for the sliding scale has also increased with regard to families and their ability to pay. So combining those two basically make it necessary for us, in order to cover our costs, which is our commitment to the town, this is a full-day program that basically we fund using grants from the state and by tuitions from the families, not impacting the town budget at all. That, in order to accomplish that goal of being basically neutral in terms of impact on the budget, that we require an increase of $200 for next year. So, excuse me, I would move to approve a $200 increase, thereby raising the full-day kindergarten tuition to $3,300 for the FY10-11 school year. And again, this is recommended by the Finance Subcommittee.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a question. Is there any indication that the anticipated grants that we were going to receive are in fact going to be received? In other words, remember that we were, we were kind of operating on an expectation, but obviously no promise, that we would see repeat grants. Is that?
Yes, Mr. Gillis.
We're anticipating a 10% reduction in the state's full-day kindergarten grant, and that's reflected in these numbers.
And it's factored in?
It's factored in.
That's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Ms. Gormly, do you have a recommendation for this?
Yes, I'd recommend the increase.
If I could just comment, that we know that it's tough budgetary times out there for everybody, not only the school budget, the town budget, but also families. We don't entertain increasing tuition lightly, but we feel, again, given our commitment to be neutral in terms of that additional full-day programming, that we do need to ask families to take that additional $200 on.
Ms. Gormly, you've collected some data on fees that other schools, our private schools, are charging. Should, could you share that with us at this time? That will help us understand where we fit in in the realm of the.
The Finance Subcommittee asked if I would do this research. Canton Public Schools for full-day K, $3,500. You asked for me to look at the private kindergartens in the area. Campbell School, $7,800. Carriage House, $9,900. St. Mary's, $5,900. St. Agatha's, $4,700. Milton Academy, $20,000. And Thatcher Montessori, $12,000.
Enough shit.
We're bargaining. It's a bargain. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you.
And may I add one item that I left off my report that's timely with this. And it will be across the web and will fully advertise the Kindergarten Information Night, January 28th, at 7:00 in the Milton High School Auditorium. We'll fully present the full-day kindergarten and our continuing half-day kindergarten program. But we'll put that out to all of the citizens of the town, that date again several times.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is the FY10 status. And I'm not sure that we've actually discussed this in our meeting, but I would defer to School Business Administrator Gillis just to give us an update as to where we are.
Sure. As a preview to end of the second quarter, December 31st of the fiscal year, we're in pretty good shape. Things are going as planned budgetarily in the general fund. Grants revolving are also in pretty good shape. The grants do lag because of the claims process. We have more expenses. We put in a claim to the state and then they reimburse us a little bit late. So it's a cash flow issue. You know, if the committee so wishes, we can, I can produce a summary, three-page report, one for the general fund, one for the grants, and one for the revolving funds, so that you get that on a monthly basis. But in short, we don't have any vexing problems, but things are tight. And as we discussed with the athletic program, some of our programs are based on fundraising. And some of our, like kindergarten, is based on tuition and collections. So we have to make sure we stay on top of those things. And John Phelan and I this afternoon, we're chasing down a few families that are behind.
Thank you very much. And I might add that the three-page report that Mr. Gillis has put together is very informative. And I think sending it out on a monthly basis would be a great, I think, practice.
And Mrs. Kelly, I didn't know if you or Mr. Pavlicek wanted to report out about the upcoming special town meeting?
Mr. Pavlicek, I'll defer to you.
Well, I don't know that there's much to report out that we haven't reported out before. My understanding is the warrant is still going to call for a $700,000 reduction in budgets in anticipation of further 9C cuts. And I haven't heard any changes in that. So that's, there are certain cuts out there that still haven't been voted by the legislature. And so we're pending those, and the rest of it is just anticipated possibilities. So that's my understanding for the special town meeting, but I haven't heard an update beyond that.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then the last item is the FY11 level-funded budget. And by level-funded budget, it's the exercise by which we have, take our submission for the FY11 budget, which is $35 million, some odd, and bring it down to level dollar, to where we are this year with our budget. And the administration has been working long and hard, brainstorming, trying to find ways to gain efficiencies within the system as much as possible, but also identify those positions that would indeed need to be cut going forward into next year if no additional funding sources are identified. So I'm not sure whether we want to go through that, Superintendent Gormly. No, no. Okay. So I guess I'd like to report that the process is ongoing. We don't have a definitive list yet, but it is certainly working. Any member of the committee that has additional items that they'd like us to look at or would like to be put on the list or consider it, I think, please email us and we will put that on the table. Additionally, we have the goal of providing our entire budget and its backup for the end of this month to the Warren Committee. So that process is ongoing as well. We hope to be having backup documentation being sent out over the next days and weeks so that by the end of the month, we'll have documentation that we can approve and send on to the Warren Committee for their consideration. And that is the Finance Subcommittee report, unless someone else would like to comment.
I just think it's worth saying that if, if in fact we get no dollars for next year in absolute terms above what we have this year, the scenario is going to be as gruesome as we've ever seen it. There's no question about it. People looked at what happened, the potential to happen last year, and said, well, that's, you know, completely unacceptable. And at a zero-dollar level, I think much of what people heard about last year will be back. I think there's no way to avoid it. I mean, we're basically looking at between fixed costs and so forth, the better part of $2 million to roll over what we do now, with no additions of anything. And if you're going to get zero, you've got to figure out where you're going to squeeze $2 million once again out of the budget. And so, and there is no guarantee, by the way, that we will get zero. I mean, the latest estimates are, we could get less than zero. Because the town, with the state's financial situation, it's not at all clear what the town's revenue picture will be for fiscal '11. Some minor baby steps in revenues in December. We'll see by the end of January where the state's revenue picture is starting to move. But I know the Warren Committee has said that they may be at the point of looking at a 2% reduction in budgets for next year if, if current trends don't reverse themselves somewhat before the spring. And that's an additional $600,000 for us. So I mean, there are some fairly draconian steps we might have to take, depending on what the state's revenue picture is. So it's not going to be pleasant, which is why it's not a very pleasant exercise to walk through this level-dollar-funded budget. But it's been the administration for trying to find ways to do this with minimal possible pain, certainly pain involved in how you do it. So it, but that's, you know, just sort of a heads up to people who think that, you know, we had an override last year, we're all right. Well, things have happened since last year at the state level and so forth that is going to make it a very difficult year once again.
And I think not only is the administration trying to find creative ways, but I want to applaud you for the way you're bringing everyone in to offer their opinions and reach into all aspects of the school system, school department, and find creative ways to make it happen. So I wish you well. Okay, Policy Subcommittee, Chris, Mr. Hubien?
Second reading on the field trip policy. It was suggested at our last meeting that the addendum to the field trip policy, which would be annualized field trips that do not need to be approved every year, that the list would be submitted to the school committee at a specific date. And I believe the first meeting in October was suggested. That way, it gives the teachers a month to petition the superintendent to include their field trips on that list and enough time for the superintendent to compile it and present it to the school committee.
Can I just clarify that, Mr. Hubien? So are you asking, are you saying that the first meeting in October would be the vote that the school, would be the meeting that the school committee would vote on?
Vote on the addendum for the year, yes.
Perfect. Second, thank you. Question, Mrs. Kelly?
Are you asking that date to be inserted into the policy?
That's correct.
Okay. Do you have a place?
Yes. The third line from the bottom, it says, "List of annual field trips by the first meeting of October of each year." Left-hand side, three items up. Okay?
Mrs. Kelly?
Just, again, I guess I'm going to raise my issues with this. The list that has been provided thus far doesn't have the level of detail for us to even start off from my perspective that would identify costs for next year, what potential fundraising activities will happen, whether the field trip will be on a school day or not, which are sort of the three key things that I look for when being asked to approve a field trip. So I'm not sure whether this is. So I'm not sure whether this is being asked... When we're approving this policy, are we also approving the list at this time?
No.
Okay. So it's just the wording of the policy?
Just the wording right now, yes.
So I don't know whether it makes sense for us to put a level of detail, a minimum level of detail, that would be included in the list so that we would consider it? I guess I'm just throwing it out there.
Well, I think the policy, as we discussed it, was if there was any substantial change to that field trip from the previous year, that would be brought forward.
Right. And seeing that if, again, I'm assuming that this list that we've been given is the start. This is basically this year's version of this? Or is this just a sample?
This is a sample of what it would look like.
What it would look like.
That we will get next October, yes.
Okay. So none of this will happen until next October? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes. We're going under the current field trip policy until that point.
Okay.
So Mrs. Kelly, are you suggesting that maybe we add some columns to this form?
Right. Again, I'm misunderstanding. For some reason, I'm thinking this is an addendum to... Okay.
No. That what you're holding is not part of the addendum.
What I'm concerned about is the information provided with which, for us as a committee, to start our approval of this particular field trip moving forward. That's... And then, you know, to some extent, okay, so I think it's... The recommendation of the superintendent is what would bring, you know, a change in a particular field trip to our attention. Is that a threshold? You know, if the cost changed by $700, you know, $750, is that within a threshold that we would expect as a committee, the superintendent, to bring to our attention? Or how do we sort of discern those kinds of things? Again, my three issues are whether school... Whether it's during school, what are the fundraising activities, and what are the costs of the particular field trip?
So maybe this chart, this table that we have, could just be edited so that there are three more columns? One that has an approximate cost, because we won't know the exact cost, but a ballpark. And then fundraising opportunities. And then, yes or no, will school days be missed? And if yes, how many? Can we be that specific?
Yes.
Well, that's not part of the...
That's not part of the policy.
I understand that.
Why don't we just say in the policy that we'll provide the school committee with a proposed list of annual field trips by the first meeting in October, such list to contain sufficient information so that the committee can determine the cost, dates, et cetera. And then you can kind of tell... It seems to me you can tell the superintendent in advance some of the stuff you want on the list so that it will move through. Because if it's not on the list, you'll object, and then it won't be acceptable. So what if you simply said after by the first meeting or during the first meeting in October, comma, "Such list to contain such information as the committee may reasonably request with respect to cost, dates, and times." A cost, dates, and other material information. Would that work?
Yep.
So do we accept that amendment?
I'd just offer that as a friendly amendment to my own motion.
Yes, Mr. Huban? Okay. Great. Okay. Any other discussion about this?
Mary, does that work for you?
Yeah.
All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you.
Second.
That is...
It feels like the air conditioning's on.
The next item is the class size policy. And at our last meeting, Ms. Kelly addressed that we change the first line of the class size from "The committee is aware that class size is a variant upon effective teaching" to "The school committee strongly believes that class size is important for effective teaching."
I'd move it in that form.
Mrs. Kelly? Sorry. I'm sorry.
I'll second Burn's motion. As I was rereading this, and I apologize once again, the last sentence, to me, brings into this policy something that, quite frankly, isn't necessary from my perspective, which it says, "The school committee will at all times make efforts to increase the instructional support in the classroom when possible." To me, this is really a policy about class size and our efforts as a school committee to maintain low class size where possible, where financial able. So I would recommend that we strike the third sentence and that in the second sentence change it to read, "The school committee understands that achieving the goal of low class size is dependent upon the financial ability of the Milton Public Schools," and leave it at that.
That's reasonable.
That would be my recommendation.
That's okay. Friendly amendment, again.
Accepted.
Yeah. Low class size? Do we need to say what low? I mean, my low is different than somebody else's low.
And I think this is where we've gotten into trouble in the past.
That's right.
Is that I think if we describe a number... Because we... I think the original class size policy was written primarily for elementary classrooms.
Right.
Never really even talked about middle and high school. So I think if we put prescription around the class size we're talking about, I think we open ourselves up.
Could we say reasonable? Reasonable class size?
Sure. I actually was thinking of reasonable at first and then said low, because that would be our goal. You know, to me, the lower the class size, the better. That should be our goal. Reasonable becomes a little bit wishy-washy. But again...
Yeah, but either way would be... It's fine. I mean, it gets the same point across.
However...
Okay. So I want to just read the policy with the amendments here. So, "The school committee strongly believes that class size is important for effective teaching. The school committee understands that achieving the goal of low class size is dependent upon the financial ability of the Milton Public Schools."
That's the entire policy.
Correct.
That's okay.
That's good.
Any further discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business. Mrs. Kelly?
Yes. I want to apologize for keeping dragging this meeting online.
If I just pulling it a little...
I'm sorry.
My ears are not working. It's a fan or something.
And the air conditioning's on.
Right. And I, you know, I'm reluctant to bring up this topic, but quite frankly, I feel like I'm obligated to as a school committee member. I know this is a personal issue for one of our members. It truly is a personal issue, but I think it does have an impact on the school committee and therefore the Milton Public Schools. Each of us, when we decided to run for this position, you know, obviously discussed it with our friends and family and, you know, wanted to join this group to do what's in the best interest of the Milton Public Schools. We went through the process. We make every effort at this table to do our best to be good examples to the community, to provide good policies for the Milton Public Schools, to run efficiently and effectively, and to provide the best education that we possibly can. And we also, when we did get elected, took an oath of office. And, you know, we take those oaths very seriously. I believe the Milton School Committee needs to have high standards, and we pursue those standards by approving policies. And one of the policies that we have that's presently in place is on staff conduct. And I'd like to read a couple of sentences from it. "All staff members have a responsibility to familiarize themselves with and abide by the laws of the Commonwealth as these affect their work, the policies of the school committee, and the regulations designed to implement them. In the area of personal conduct, the committee expects that teachers and others will conduct themselves in a manner that not only reflects credit to the Milton Public Schools, but also sets forth a model worthy of emulation by students." And I think that is an appropriate standard, quite frankly. And I think that there have been examples in the Milton Public Schools where teachers or... And I guess I know one example that at least a coach has gone afoul of this standard, and that person resigned. I'm not sure how it played out, whether he was asked to resign or whether he just voluntarily resigned. But I think ultimately, as a school committee, we need to set high standards, especially for our kids. And I know that we don't have the ability, from a legal perspective, to say to one member that they no longer can serve on the Milton School Committee. But I do believe that as a committee, we can make a statement regarding that, quite frankly. So I guess I just wanted to open that up for discussion.
Are there other members of the school committee that would like to comment? Ms. Bagley-Jones?
It's an incredibly painful topic and one I wish we didn't have to talk to.
Could you just pull it in a little... I'm sorry, Chris.
It's a really painful topic and one I wish we didn't have to talk about. I do really think it's a private matter, and my heart goes out on this issue. But I do think there are public ramifications for our staff, who would be in serious trouble, for the kids who didn't walk last year at graduation because they had been drinking, for the ball player who didn't play this year because he was caught drinking, for my kids who I say, "If you ever do drink, please don't drive," for the five kids that I knew in high school who died from drunken driving. I'm very moved by this issue personally and professionally and as a school committee member. And as I said, my heart goes out to the member and to the member's family. But I think that there are public ramifications that we would be remiss if we did not address. I have a 16-year-old who has many friends, older and younger. Drinking has been a topic that has been discussed a lot at my house. It's a very, very tough issue to talk to teenagers about if we don't hold the line. And by no means am I saying, for myself or anyone else I'm sure in this room, that, you know, that saying, "He who lives in glass houses shouldn't throw stones." We've all been there but for the grace of God, I would assume. I'll speak for myself. But I do think it's really important for the kids that we are supposed to be an example for, that we talk about this and we think about what this means to the school committee. So that's what I have to say.
Any other school committee members wish to comment on this?
Yeah.
Mr. Loveling?
First of all, we're talking in the third person here. We're talking about Chris. Chris knows we're talking about him. Was I happy to see what happened? No. Do I think that it could have happened to others? Did Mr. Huban acknowledge immediately and without delay to the court an admission of sufficient facts that would support the claim that the prosecutor was making? Yes. I think that took, in my experience at least, a great deal of courage to do that. There is a... I look at it a little differently, and I agree with everything you've said. We have a policy, but it's a very personal matter. I know Chris well enough over the years to know that he's probably beat himself up pretty badly about this. I know it's been very hard in his family. And I know that the pain that they and he experienced has been, to some extent, a bit mortifying. On the other hand, it's a personal decision and not ours to make as to what else, if anything, he should do. I would suggest that this is as good a teaching moment, as teachers often talk about, as one could possibly imagine. I think it was a teaching moment for Chris. I think it was a teaching moment, obviously, for his family. His children are old enough to understand what transpired. I, for one, am not going to pile on at this point. I think the message has been sent. I think Chris has learned his lesson. I'm sure he feels very badly about it. But I'm not prepared to support a motion of personal censure or a like proposal, although I haven't heard it from you. I suspect maybe that's what you're going to suggest. I do agree that the policy is an important one, and I would suggest that we, as a committee, view this as a very serious teaching moment and hope, sincerely hope, that it never happens again to Chris or anybody else sitting at a table like this. But the importance of what happened and the impact that it can have in a community is Fortunately, nobody was hurt. Chris wasn't hurt. No one else was hurt. We are fortunate in that respect. And we have lost people here in Milton as a result of drinking, either themselves or others. And it's a painful moment. But beyond that, I leave that to Chris and his conscience. And I suggest to you that there's been some pretty serious self criticism and pain that's been suffered by he and his family, and I don't think that it needs any more attention than that.
Mr. Pavlicek?
Yeah, I'd like to concur with Burn, just in the sense of the teachable moment and referring how we talk to our kids. I mean, we all make mistakes. Every one of us. We're human. And one of the things I've always said to my children is, you know, if you make a mistake, you stand up, you admit it, you accept responsibility for it, you apologize, you accept the consequences of your actions. And that's what happened here. And I think in that sense, the aftermath of it becomes a much more teachable moment than obviously the unfortunate incident. So I also would not be willing to support any motion. I think it was a shame. I would feel very differently if we had a toothpaste defense being brought to us or something like this. I think that the important thing is the response to it in this case. And I think the response was, I think, all we could have asked for. So, you know, it is one of those things that happens, and it is a shame. But I think we can try to make some good out of the bad in the sense of trying to tell our children what the way to react to a situation like this is, because we are all going to have lapses at some point in our lives, and you have to know how to deal with them. And it's a shame, but I think that's how I was looking at it.
I would agree with what Glenn and Burn have said. And also just make the statement that by statute, the school committees... The only authority we have is limited to hiring and firing the superintendent and to setting policy for the school district. So we don't have any authority to sanction, remove any of that... Any of those choices that may be considered. Our authority just really lies in with hiring and firing the superintendent and setting policy. And I'm not going to continue to repeat what people have already said. Mrs. Kelly, do you have something else to say?
First, I'd like to apologize for not expressing my extreme sadness that this has happened. I didn't start out that way. I think I was a little nervous just bringing up the whole topic. I agree that this is undoubtedly a teachable moment and a profound teachable moment for all of us and all of our families. And I agree with you that we have no recourse in terms of asking a school committee member to step down. However, you know, the teachable moment for me is the taking responsibility that goes one step above because Chris is, as we are, in a different position than someone who just lives in their house in Milton and doesn't serve as elected position. And I feel personally that would be for the benefit of the Milton Public Schools and for the Milton School Committee if Chris were to take it upon himself to step down. That's my personal opinion. I can see by, you know, the expression of your sentiment that that's certainly not something that you would agree with in terms of emotion, so I won't go ahead and make it. But I just do want to go on record to say, and again, it's a tragic situation. I'm so sorry that it has happened to Chris and his family. But again, in our positions as leaders and as policy setters, and that's really where I'm coming down here, I think it would behoove Chris to step down, and I think that would be in the best interest of the Milton Public Schools.
Any other discussion? So I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Remove.
Strike up.
All in favor? Thank you.